Correspondence regarding the changes or proposed changes to the bus timetable.
Yes, I think I was going to invite Richard from Connect View if he wanted to say a few words on that one.
Try and read the relevant bets of that, most I can read. Is that right?
Yes, of course.
Yes, we just put out a little statement. Connect View welcomes the introduction of buses connecting directly with trains at Ocampton Station. Our 450-strong campaigning group has been pushing for this to happen since the rail line opened at Ocampton in November 2021. Creating this bus branch line is a positive development and marks a significant step forward on the route towards eventually reinstating the rail line to View, something that this council supports. However, to ensure long-term service sustainability by catering for people's currents from future connectivity needs, the following steps are vital. Cornwall and Devon councils need to fund additional journeys to avoid significant loss of travel opportunities by providing, in addition to the planned Sunday service, which is yet to be sorted, services that enable current student travel opportunities to continue, an early viewed halls with a bus length for workers, a later viewed bus connecting with a later train arrival at Ocampton. GWR Stagecoach Cornwall and Devon Councils need to work together to provide bus rail through fairs at a similar level to the current bus fairs between View and Exeter. GWR Stagecoach Cornwall and Devon Councils should ensure that all bus and rail timetables and publicity fully reflect connectivity for destinations between View and Exeter. And finally, a partnership of GWR, Stagecoach, Cornwall and Devon Councils, Connect View, and Ocarail and others perhaps, should fully collaborate on monitoring route performance, promotion, publicity, et cetera, to maximise usage. We are debating this at our AGM on 22nd of October at Falcon, at which anybody is welcome to attend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so obviously I got quite a lot of emails in regards to this. I'm very grateful for the public, especially those students who spent their time so passionately, like, just expressing that issue. Access to health, jobs and education is basically already a postcode lottery, which we basically miss out on all the time. We're reliant on cross-border access to hospitals, universities and colleges. And it affects our economy too. The big businesses have missed out on investment and opportunities due to all public travel options, with my own business being one of those businesses. We've had investors pull out because they literally couldn't get from Exeter to View, that was it. So I've been there myself as well, as a student catching a bus, spending many, many hours a day on multiple buses going to school. And it put me at a disadvantage to my peers. You know, I couldn't, I had less time, less energy to do coursework and homework. And ultimately, our children here need to get fair and equal access to that education opportunities the rest of Cornwall have. And it is positive now that we've got a connection to the railway network much earlier than Exeter, getting to Ocampton, but that alone really isn't enough. View ultimately needs a regular connection to Exeter throughout the mornings so people can get to work, through the evenings so people can get home, and throughout the weekend for those of us who happen to have weekend shifts, which we mustn't forget is a thing round here. Or even if you just want to visit friends or family or cultural activities. View also shouldn't be having to pay more for those access to things. We should be paying as equal to everybody else and not basically being asked to pay more now, especially with rising costs. Ultimately, Stagecoach is running like a commercial line. So if they don't think it's profitable, they will close it and that is entirely within their rights to do so. Ultimately, it really does come down, this responsibility of access to education, health and jobs, comes down to Cornwall Council and Scotland basically, the central government. So really, like as View Stratton Town Council, I'm proposing that we put out a statement, because there is a lot of people asking us to have comment on this. To basically say it is critical for View and Stratton to stay connected to Hallsworthy, Ocampton, Exeter and beyond, and that View Stratton Town Council will lobby to ensure a regular, dependable and accessible public transport network for the Viewd area. And then separately to that, that as a town council, this is not separately to the statement, that we'll actually try and engage, obviously you can with the Cornwall Council, Scotland, like Devon Council doesn't necessarily rock and cross border with community groups such as Connect Views and local charities to restore and improve our connectivity.
Yes, fantastic. Thank you, Kenny.
I'll come right out and say, I have no confidence that there will ever be a railway established in View. I believe it to be a rather ridiculous but dream. I believe that the rail service from Ocampton to Exeter is at best a tourist service for which people from View might like to see some pretty trees on their travel. I think the bus from View to Exeter is a more connective form of transport, it's more adaptive. I don't honestly see that many people in View would agree that the train from Ocampton into Exeter is better than a direct passenger from View to Exeter. So I might not be the most PC in saying this, but I think that connectivity at View has actually gone backwards because of the opening of Ocampton, which is a terrible thing, nothing to be applauded. Having Ocampton open to give people choices to where they start their train journey, fine. Having Ocampton as the only way to sensibly get into Exeter is a disgrace and we should be lobbying whoever to re-establish that link. And as for it being a commercial link, public transport is not commercial anywhere in the country. There is public money funding public transport everywhere. And if somebody can't come up with some money to fund a direct link between View and Exeter, then this is something very sad to wrong. That's more to penta than that.
Okay, so thank you.
This is a point for clarification, like the Stagecoach line specifically was apparently a commercial line, so back in 1984 or something? I think we heard this the other night, where the government basically gave permission for commercial companies coming in and literally run commercial only lines. So it wasn't necessarily being supervised by the Cornwall Council, from what I believe. I'm looking in the mirror to get guesses on those right now. And so that specific route, only because I've been told as well, back when the line first closed, we were getting coaches. And I think, you know, that was, it was part of the rail link and it would show as a rail link even though it's on a coach. And that, over time, has been completely eroded to a commercial bus route and now, basically. And so, and that's where we're at. So yeah, I get what you're saying, but it is a commercial bus route.
Okay, so going back to what you said, proposal to issue a statement on our start, yes?
Sorry, before I take that proposal.
Yeah, yeah, go for it.
Well, I just wanted to give you some sense of assurance that the Cornwall councillors have been involved and indeed received the same probable emails that councillors Goodham received as did Scott Mann's office, because he's been involved as well. Councillor Sean Tilby and Councillor Nick Chubback and myself met yesterday online to discuss this. Obviously very interested to hear what Connect View are going to say and I think Mr Moore probably has a few words before we move to any sort of resolution. If not, I'm unsure, we can make a resolution, but never mind, we'll take kindness from the town clerk on that. So the three Cornwall councillors agreed to work together on this issue. So we'll represent the whole of our community area network as one voice. We've been told that we're going to have a briefing on transport and connectivity tomorrow, where we'll be able to ask questions and some maybe certain questions, so anything that comes out of this meeting, we'll be able to represent back to them tomorrow. And then once we have that as a follow-up, we aim to get the two cabinet members of Cornwall Council involved that we think are appropriate to this issue. One of which is Philip Desmond, who's the councillor for the portfolio holder of Transport, who we met earlier this year, Councillor Goodham, I believe met him as well. I know met him as well because I was in the room. Also Councillor Barbara Ellenbrook, who is the councillor, cabinet member for children and families and her remit is to look after educational transport system. So we're going to ask her to come in, we're going to ask Scott Mann to come into the same meeting as well if we can. And also we're trying to find a suitable representative from Exeter College to represent themselves because we think that they do have some sense of responsibility to make sure their students can access their facilities, even though she's driven, so to speak, from this end. But anyway, that's just a report from the activities that we had yesterday and going forward. So there is action going on at my level.
Thank you. Yes, I will come to you, Mr Jennings, yeah, go for it.
All this bus about Exeter, what about trying to get down Cornwall? And two weeks' time, the Sunday bus stops going south. You've still got bus going to Exeter, I said that, on a Sunday, got nothing going south. Don't you think you would be fighting more for being able to get down south? I mean, this is Cornwall, trying to stay in Cornwall. And I've tried to see now, I've got a thing trying to work out, the View, the Truro bus don't seem to go anymore, it seems to go View and Newquay now. I don't know why that is, I can't, I'm not being very clever, I haven't yet managed to work out where you're supposed to get the bus to go to Truro. But I mean, you know, it don't sound easier than trying to go to Exeter because it must go to Exeter.
Yeah, thank you. Yes.
Well, there's a number of things that we've mentioned, you know, in the last few minutes. In the answer to this gentleman's query, the bus services were revised and going towards Newquay. Obviously they were extended to Newquay, but the key point is that there is a next bus changing point at St Cullen Major and there's a bus that connects with the 94 that comes from View. Whatever it is, there is a connection there which takes you to Truro, so there is a way of getting to it. It is a long journey, there's no question about it.
But it's not a guaranteed connection.
Isn't it?
Not as far as I know.
I thought it was, I don't know.
No, it doesn't say guarantee.
Mr Jennings, sorry, can you just...
Anyway, my understanding, it is a connection that they advertise, so whether it's guaranteed or not, I can't comment on. And that's one thing. The other thing is in today's View and Stratton post, there is one letter in response to last week's front page and it said integration needed for bus and rail services in Cornwall and Devon. It does tend to concentrate on the lawnside of things, but I do recommend that everyone reads that to see because it does put the picture in, acting into perspective. And the other thing is that although the six, number six service, only run, the new service from the 30th of October only runs from View to Ocampton, and at Ocampton, it connects with the 6A service which will run from Ocampton to Exeter, and that is a definite connection there. So to say that you won't be able to get from View to Exeter by bus is incorrect because you will, but you just need, sorry, to make one change in Ocampton. But obviously the benefit of the whole thing is that it gives more options to passengers because now when they get to Ocampton, they've got the option of travelling by train or bus to, from Ocampton to Exeter and they didn't have that option before. And the other question about the usage of the line is, we had a meeting with GWR this afternoon and they've given the usage figures of the train, even taking into account strike days and the number of passengers using the train per week is basically increasing and not decreasing. So it wasn't just the surge at the beginning because it was something new. When the early service started, the numbers went up and they've stayed largely at that level right through. But the last two weeks in September were particularly busy. And the other thing is that people using the train are not just tourists coming in. There are people coming in, I think the percentage is something like 40% are people coming in towards Ocampton and 60% going the other way, you know, at the origin of their journeys. So it really is catering for a lot of different types of passengers. Yes, some are leisure, some are coming to Ocampton to walk over the moors, there's evidence that there's quite a few of that. Some are obviously commuting and others just travelling between Ocampton and Exeter for leisure purposes. The other thing I've noticed recently is the number of students using the trains has increased significantly. Anecdotally, someone was told that there are about 75 students a day using the trains, which obviously they were before, they've just got into that sort of habit. So some of the statements that are being made are not entirely correct.
Can I chip in and say that the overall passenger numbers are 250% above the predicted usage of the line? And the predicted usage was before Covid as well. So I mean, it's one of the, it is a case of, you know, if you build it, they will come and people will adapt their journeys. And yeah, there needs to be more choices as to how people go about their travel. But some people don't have any choices at all, if you don't have a car, you don't have choices. And if you're a student or if you're old or if you're disabled, there might be, there's a whole range of people for whom public transport is really, really vital. And I would say, in all the conversations we've had with all the people over the last six years, it's got to be about 98% of the people we speak to just say, bring it on, let's level up all the way to View and let's reinstate the lines that were closed by beaching. And then other parts of the country where that happens, it is phenomenally successful and the passenger numbers are way above what was predicted even by the most sort of optimistic predictions.
Thank you. So as far as, you know, we...
There's been a proposal made, that hasn't been submitted yet, I was going to believe. And I would say, as long as it doesn't involve changing council policy or use of resources, I would advise you are safe to make a statement if you're empowering Councillor Good to lobby on the town council's behalf. I'd say that's...
Yes, okay, so, yes. Shaun, I do a second. Yes, can I announce you to repeat the guts of the proposal?
Yeah, so there's a statement. It is critical for View and Stratton to stay connected to Hallsworthy, Ocampton, Exeter and beyond. That View Stratton Town Council will lobby to ensure a regular, dependable and accessible public transport network for the Viewd area. And then separately to that was, at the town council, we engage with Cornwall Council and Scott Mann, working together with cross-border parishes, community groups such as Connect Ude and local charities to restore and improve our connectivity.
Yeah, fantastic. Okay, we've had a second, so if I can go to vote first, yeah, is that okay? All those in favour of that, those two actions? Is it possible? No? Sorry.
Do the rest.
And against abstaining? Sorry, I thought you had your.
Purely procedural.
Adam, is it possible for a kind of statement to be issued to us later, Peter and Nicky? For tomorrow, so?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, there is other correspondence, just to note, the council received correspondence regarding equality for all who's written up to the elderly. And also, there is a correspondence, we don't usually get notified of this, but Live West have told us that their development in Popple actually has two plots being released for affordable housing to come onto the market, to prove their share ownership. But it's interesting that the affordable housing in the defined sense is actually being delivered to units in that development.
Yes, Peter.
Just a brief, so I was intrigued also to have received that, so I chased it through and asked you a bit more information. They're both already under offer and effectively gone. But there are more affordable units, which will come up very shortly on the camera side.
Right, okay, thank you.
And also on the Puffles side.
That was the Puffles side.
Oh, that was one you referred to, sorry.
Is that all on the correspondence, thank you. Yeah, wonderful, okay. I'll try and zoom through mine a little bit. So a lot has happened since we last met in September, most notably the very sad passing of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth the Second. I felt really honoured to have been able to hold our own proclamation ceremony here at Bude Light, taking two minutes beforehand in appreciation and respect for the life and commitment our Queen upheld. I recently also attended a meeting, which was called by Ian Soltan. We, as a council, had commissioned him to carry out a debt and money advice study. At the meeting, we explored ideas on how we, as a community, our council, can work together to ease the impact of the cost of living crisis this winter. I applaud everyone that worked to get what felt like every incredible, community-driven individual known to man in the same room together, it was quite something. Amazing ideas floating around, and I know we'll be hearing a bit more about that later on this evening. This last week has seen some incredible sporting action on our beaches, with the World Surf Kayaking Championships, over one hundred and fifty competitors from twenty-five nations, all here in Bude. The atmosphere down there has been amazing, and a huge well done to all of those that put so much into organising it. An amazing event for us to host. I know England, as of yesterday, Jackie might be able to update us here, yesterday they were in silver position. What's happened since yesterday?
I've been out before I could get a phone.
Okay, well, we'll find out. It was looking very, very good, yes, okay. I know they finished up today, didn't they? It was their last, last, last heat today. Lastly, but by no means least, a huge thank you to Simon Ermey, who sadly left us recently. He was a huge support to myself, and I was very, very sorry to see him go. So huge thank you to Simon. And I think that is me. Oh, no, one last thing was the opportunity to nominate yourself as a councillor for Stratton Ward is still open until the fourteenth of October. Okay.
Just a quick, sorry, that's the call for election.
Call for election, sorry, yes. Okay, that's everything there. So opportunity for Cornwall councillors, whether we're going to Shaun first and then over to Peter.
Yeah, myself and Nick Chappack were on the Devon Cornwall Crime Panel Committee. We had to attend the meeting on the twenty-first, because obviously, due to the Queen's passing the previous meeting, it's cancelled on the twelfth, to confirm the appointment of the new chief constable, Mr Will Care, OBE. He's currently the deputy chief constable of Police Scotland. He's served in Northern Ireland, he's an Irish gentleman. And he's served, say, in very many various police appointments throughout the UK, let's say in particular in Northern Ireland. He's got a great CV, and we were quite happy to endorse what the independent committee that interviewed, went through the whole interview process with all the candidates, and he came out top quite easily. So we were quite happy to endorse their considered opinion. Peter's already mentioned a meeting that we had with Desmond here in Walworths. We're hoping to follow that through. I'm not sure if the town councils received any correspondence from Holesworthy Rural Transport.
Not recently.
Not recently.
Right, I attended with chairman of Morsoe Council, a meeting on the twenty-seventh of July, where basically, they put their cards on the table, said, we're running out of money, we need local support. They wrote to Morsoe Council, which we had a meeting last week, seeking assistance of sort of, around about five hundred pounds, what they're trying to achieve from all the parishes to try and supplement the services that they do actually serve quite a bit of this area, which Kate is probably aware of. So more so considering that, I'm not sure if you've actually been written to, but I'm asking the chairman to write directly to all the parishes within this part.
I know we've had ongoing sort of contact with them via Martin, actually, slightly indirectly, but along the lines of.
I spoke to Dr Julia today about the Warne Rooms project. And also, it was mentioned in, not last council meeting, council meeting before, when I introduced the Warne Rooms project, that they were going to be working with us on that. And that actually, we'd expressed, expressed as a council, if I'm right, correct me if I'm wrong, that we wanted to support them. So the conversation with Dr Julia today was, come and talk to us.
Yeah.
Okay, well, save me a shot.
Round and round, where I say, yes.
Yeah, I'm not sure if everybody understands that the Holesworthy Rural Transport Group, but they do actually provide connectivity to, for Exeter basketball and that sort of thing, for one-off trips, and also for groups such as football teams, et cetera, with only bus system. So it is something that I'd like to see if we can support, because they do great service to the community and the wider community in Cornwall as well. Well, we touched on the Route Six, the six A, which Peter quite openly put out position. We will play that tomorrow in the members briefing. We've got the Bude CAD, I'm not sure if anybody's upstaged on that. But I understand there's been some funding from a third party, I won't go into details, but I'm trying to get some money from Cornwall Council to hopefully reinstate the CAD. But that's work in progress at the moment, but I'll report back as soon as I've got any further information on that. That's it, I'm not sure. So if there's any questions, please ask, if not, email, or send a piece of all again.
Thank you, Shaun. Okay, there's no questions, I'll go to Peter.
Yeah, thanks. Sometimes it's really difficult, in my own mind, to separate my Cornwall councillor role and my Bude Stratton Town Council role. So if you don't mind, some of the issues that I'm going to talk about might be a bit conflated. But what I want to do is stand up in the next agenda item, because I'll cover everything on this one. But anyway, just a very brief report. The twenty-first of September was Cornwall Council, Paul Council. The most pressing agenda item that I really remember thinking about a lot during the day was the vice chairman of the council, David Harris, standing up and saying that the budgetary pressures were so intense, that he felt that Cornwall Council was only going to be able to deliver statutory services and that all the optional services, which a lot of them are very supportive to our communities, may have in the future to be dropped or will start falling away by the wayside. And today, in meetings, I heard things like direct delivery of library book services potentially falling by the wayside. And, yeah, lots of these smaller activities that the council does that supports communities that I think in the future we are at risk of losing. And that was sort of quite a sobering meeting for me to listen to him. The vice chairman of the council standing up, put his hands in the air and say, oh, crikey, there's not that much money left, if any at all. Locally, on the same day, actually, I came back from Truro and went to our local CCTV group meeting. And that was going really well, we think. I think they have got most of the cameras are all operating well. They had a reasonably quiet summer, even though there was a lot of people in the area. And the crime statistics at the moment seem to be okay and under control. And they are developing the network, and they're trying to put in one or two more new cameras. And they always are very grateful for any funding they can get. I think we did give them a couple of thousand quid fairly recently, so they wanted to convey their gratitude for that funding. Also, I attended Bude Area Tourist Board, Board Meeting in September. They, again, felt we had a good summer, there was lots of people here, reasonably well behaved, and they felt that it was, it was as good a summer as we could have hoped for. And effectively, the tourism offer in this area, they felt they were quite happy with, and it was going well. I also attended, and this is probably the most important one for me personally, on the twenty-second of September, the BV Mag, which is Bude Valley and Management Action Group. I think I've got the acronym right, I'm looking at Chris to correct me if I'm wrong, but I can never remember exactly what it is, I think that's what it is.
It's the Bude Valley Management Advisory.
Right, thank you. It's the first time that that group has met since before Covid in person. And there's an awful lot to get through on the agenda, because as we know, and I've said at previous council meetings, the canal has become requiring an awful lot of maintenance, needs a dredging from top to bottom, and also during that dry period, the canal bet itself dried out due to the drought. We were told in that meeting that there is a figure of around about a million pounds being put aside or found for the dredging programme, which should begin, they're hoping, towards the end of this year, if not, it will be early spring next year. We also heard a lot about the lock gate and harbour management during the unprecedented drought. Contrary to some popular rumour, it wasn't down to actions and management of the lock gates or anything at all like that, it was just purely down to drought. And what happens is, or one of the major effects is, is that once the river levels start getting low, no water can be diverted from the river into the canal at all. And that's an environment agency decision, and that did contribute quite strongly towards that drying out effect. And also, no lock gate in the world doesn't leak, and you can't make them entirely waterproof unless you silicon seal them up, and then they wouldn't work anyway. The final thing that's worth mentioning on that, which has come to light after that meeting, there was a final lock movement, hoped for at the end of the season, to lock in some of the fishing boats. And one of the boats, Tina Maria, that regularly visits and comes on the seaside over winter. But the locks can't be worked now, not because they're damaged, but it's purely a financial issue. Because there wasn't sufficient water in the canal to sluice out the sand in the lock chamber throughout the summer, the sand has now built up, meaning the lock gates can't be operated unless that sand is removed. And the only way to remove it is by mechanical means, which would cost about five thousand quid to get a contractor in with diggers and scoop it all out. So the Harbours Authority said that it's just not financially viable. And all of the people that wanted to lock in this winter, they offered alternative means of open entry throughout Harbour. I think that's it. I just want to say a couple of words about shared prosperity funding. I've had emails coming through forwards from the Cornwall Council Portfolio Holder for the Economy, saying that there is funding available, and that North Cornwall, Bude specifically, will be looked on favourable for any capital projects. This was something that we had looked at before the previous elections in the programme, which we called, what are we calling it, Keith?
Strategic.
Strategic programme. And the strategic programme was effectively a portfolio of capital investment projects that was voted on by Bude Stratton Town Council, Cornwall Council, Local Enterprise Partnership, and Bude Coastal Community Team. And that hasn't really been looked at or reopened since this council came about. And I think that we really do need to start getting on and looking at those capital projects again, because if we don't do that, we won't be in line for these capital funding opportunities to come forward. And finally, I'll tell you again, I know I mentioned it before, but contracts are going out for tender for the forty-one affordable and social rent homes, which will be built by Cornwall Council on the Bennaby Farm or Shorthands Estate, so we'll see building there over the next year. So that's another small good news story for Bude.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Any questions for Peter for, yes, Mr Jennings?
I've been trying to get through to Cornwall Council now for over three months. And every time you pick the phone up and you speak to somebody, all you get is flogged off, lied to or just stick more. It's an absolute disgrace. I'm still trying to get somebody to come up and see if they can make up any part of the edge. Look, I can't even speak to anybody. You get to the first bit, the people answer the phones, and they say, oh, we'll pass on. They don't. It's an absolute waste of time. I mean, if there's anything on this planet that isn't fit for purpose, it's got to be Cornwall Council. I mean, how difficult is it to get someone to just pick a phone up and say, well, what's your problem? And say, well, there's a bloody grey hole in the edge that they won't put back.
I share your concerns. Sometimes when I try to phone up offices, I just get, either can't get hold of them or get nonsense back. But if you've got a specific problem, come to me.
Well, I'll come to you now, the hole in the edge.
The hole in the edge?
Yes.
Right.
Well, are they ever going to put it back?
Was it made by Cornwall Council?
No, it's done by the builders.
Well, it's the private property owner's hedge, isn't it?
Well, what happens is, I might go and piss and fall in the hole.
Okay, it sounds like a planning enforcement.
Well, somebody, somewhere should come up and say, hang on, you can't leave a big hole in the edge.
To be fair, I, as part of my colleagues, he came up there, was taking photos, you shouted at me.
Well, I was doing it.
And I, I was up three months ago.
Well, we've reported it up the chain through, through the official channels. I won't comment on Cornwall Council's responses, because I haven't had them yet, but.
There you go.
In your own terms, I'm sure you can.
Well, if it hasn't been submitted through the chair to Mr Jennings, if it hasn't been formally submitted as a planning enforcement issue, I will do that. If it has, we will try and find a response, so you can see what your points is.
It's just, it's absolutely ridiculous.
Thank you, I'll go to Katie. Can anyone, like, donate money to the community CCTV? Like, for example, I guess if like a specific community felt like they weren't getting the coverage or don't know how to set up a CCTV, could they come to the, like, the community CCTV and, like, specifically say, hey, can we get some coverage, please, and here's some money? Or do you think that's just, or does it, should it go through us?
I think the answer would be a simple yes. I think if, if that person or group was to come forward with funding, they, I'm fairly sure that providing it's mechanically and technically possible to put a camera where it needs to be, that they would be amenable to talking and trying to get something resolved. But bear in mind that that CCTV system is a community-run system, so there's no central control. Well, there is a central control room, which is in the police station, but it's not manned twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
It records twenty-four seven, and it's only manned on hotspots, so weekend evenings.
Was it a question for Peter?
It's a question for all the Cornwall councillors, if I may, on a completely different topic. My question is, when is the new speed limit on the L thirty-nine between Hillhead and Thorn Cross going to be implemented? Because I understood it was going to be in the summer, the forty mile an hour.
Nicky Chappack talked about that, she posted about that very well.
The notices were put out along the, like, the road in the spring.
Yeah, honest answer is, I don't know. And it technically is in Nicky's division, but we can follow it up and find out.
Shall I just do my nick?
It would be simple.
I'll do that.
In regards to the good growth capital projects and, like, a review that we should do, do you foresee, like, a mechanism for doing that right now? Or, like, or should we put up the next agenda, or was it an oversight thing to start to formalise a shape that that could be done in?
So you're not going to do it now?
Yeah.
In terms of, we, we do have on the books still, he says, in my paper, an economic development forum that hasn't, hasn't actively acted, but if councillors wish to populate that. The alternative is, we also do have the Mechanism for Vitality, and we have councillors and the vacancy on that as well, as a forum of which to explore and then refer back to council.
as a forum of which to explore and then refer back to council. So I think probably, well, I don't think we try and resolve that here.
No, it's not.
There are mechanisms for doing it, so I think we just need to decide which.
So yeah, if I can answer you a second in my own personal way. So the town team has got a bid into Cornwall Council for approximately fifty thousand pounds worth of funding, which you feel will be successful. And this council agreed that it would match fund it. And the exact amount wasn't decided, but it was hoped that it would be somewhere in the equivalent nature, around fifty thousand pounds. The town team intends to use that money to do a piece of consultative work to actually find out any permissions that we've got in our economic offer in terms of Bude. But at the same time, to also review historic plans, because a lot of that has been done on the economic piece, which I described earlier in terms of the, sorry, the strategic programme, but also probably more significantly, the economic agenda called GUEP, which was written by Ian Soltzer, which is a very good document and worth listening to. So what we want to try and do is to pull all that together. And I anticipate that the town team's money would do that piece of work. And that would probably identify the projects that might come forward for development into fuller funding bids.
Okay. onwards then, two key issues from lead councillors.
So obviously, I'm guessing lots of people sent the new bus stop opposite Sainsbury's, which is great. There's always been a bus stop there. The one thing that's missing at the moment is I haven't put the flag up yet to say that is actually a bus stop there. But I've had some really good feedback from the working Morrison's and stuff, so that's great. And apparently Cornwall Council have actually got a contractor on the books to put the flag up. So you've got to walk past Sainsbury's and see the flag there, which is great. The other thing that I was highlighting was the fact that we've got this Bude Community Network Panel on the seventeenth, where that's going to open a shortlist, open a list for expressions of interest for the next round of basically like road and crossing and things, like sign improvements and stuff. So if you can sort of individually have an idea and do it in public to what sort of improvements or things of real frictional danger that you can see. And then we can try and figure out how are we going to shortlist those and discuss them? Because it'd be great to have like a formal thing this time round. I don't know how that lines up with timing. If it's seventeenth for open to expression of interest, it should give us a month to put them in, which should be, but yeah. Does it leave much time to turn and think around, basically? So I don't know if we actually need to authorise, again, authorise an officer to fund it, basically. It's Monday the seventeenth of October. There's the opening of expression of interest, but I don't know, I don't suppose Peter or anyone know about the length that we get normally to turn around that.
I don't, but they're normally reasonably flexible.
Yeah.
I've seen the email, so yeah.
But yeah, don't know. Any improvements, please email through and put them on the teams.
Yes. I just wanted to give an update on the recent survey that went out. Thank you, Cal, yours.
No worries.
And we had the most amazing response to that, which was actually nine hundred, over nine hundred responses, which is fantastic. There was a couple of mine in about the survey, which was fair enough because it was very vain, but it was done like that on purpose. Because we wanted people's opinions, not just tick boxes. So that was fair enough. I understand why people would get annoyed with that. There was only one really derogatory where apparently you need to get rid of me. Specifically me, because I don't, I always just shout about the NYU and I don't know anything about it, so. But anyway, I know who that was. I think I know who it is. But apart from that, fantastic responses. And I did get a rather rude email about who was going to go through the questions. And I said, me, every single one. And I'm doing that at the moment and it's very painful. But I'm literally going through everyone representing the results, obviously to you guys. But there's also a community network panel meeting, which that we're going to hand over to Nikki Chayback to be handed on to the NHS. One other good thing, I stole a trick from Tomo Sullivan. I contacted the NHS for the Information Act, read of the Information Act for Stratton usage. So I actually received that back within about three weeks. I think it's meant to be two weeks, but three weeks is actually pretty impressive for them. So I passed that on to the Friends, the League of Friends of Stratton. And they had a meeting with someone from the NHS and they presented these results to them, which they didn't know about. And they were really quite impressed. And the usage of the NYU has actually gone up, and not just over the summer, but the usage overall has gone up. So it's all positive. And yeah, that's it for me. But if anyone wants to put anything through for the community network panel via me as well, just a bum email.
Thank you. Thank you, Owen. Any more, any more? Okay, so I'll go on to public participation, please, about things concerning the business of the power council. Hi, Chris.
Well, with regard to what councillor LeBroyd said with regard to the monies that have been obtained from, I think it's the shared prosperity fund to cover the part. I think the council are going to find monies from themselves and other bodies. But the actual application is for about half a million pounds. I think from the Canal and Harbour Society's point of view, we obviously recognise that that work needs to be done because of what the effect that the drought had on the canal. But obviously, on the other side of that is for them to complete the project that was completed in two thousand and nine. And because, because the canal as it is, is a valuable asset to the town, to the tourist infrastructure through green issues, from mental health issues, quiet spots, all of that stuff. And just generally a nice place to go. So I've invited councillor LeBroyd to talk to our trustees. And a date to be fixed. And I'm sure we would support what Cornwall Council is planning to do with grant monies and its own monies and such like. But we would less like to remind them that they need to think about the other side of it because that's a really valuable asset for all sorts of reasons. You know, our business that uses it and the fishing club and there's all sorts of mess, a mess.
Yeah, absolutely agree, Chris. Kevin, did you want to?
Well, all I was going to say, I was going to mention it when Pete did his statement and I thought, well, no. I'll mention it now. If the policy of the Environment Agency is if it stops raining, there's going to be no water in the canal because we're not going to allow water to come up the river to keep the canal going, then all the money in the world pumped in by Cornwall Council in A and other is going to be useless come the next time we have a dry summer. So I think as a matter of urgency on anything to do with the canal, that the Environment Agency should be brought in and sort of given the opportunity to change their policy. And if they're not going to change their policy, then maybe we really do need to sort of look at the long-term future of the canal. Because if we have a series of summers like the last summer, no amount of work or Cornwall Council or anybody else is going to do very much if the Environment Agency don't allow water to be directed into the canal. It's as simple as that.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, hi.
Hi, Ed. So Claire and I are here to represent the Two Minute Foundation. We just want to say thank you for putting that on the agenda for tonight for the lease for the equipment building. And we know that this is something we've been pushing for for now twenty-two months. I think we're on like twenty-three almost. Through many various reasons that it's just been a bit of a struggle. But we'd really love to get going on this. We've got such grand plans for it, to turn it into an amazing educational hub that we can open out to kids from Bude and beyond, adults, DCSR days, all of that stuff. And it is an eyesore, and it would be lovely to get into a nice smart new building as soon as possible. So we really hope that that's going to be something that you guys are going to approve for us.
Absolutely. Thank you. So any others before I, no, thank you very much. So on to number ten, the election of deputy mayor for the remainder of the municipal year.
Yes, I'm on my Jacky. Yes, that was the only thing that we got for email saying that I'm interested in, so.
Yes.
All Cornwall councillors, I think you've seen the piece I put in. In that show, I just wanted to take up the position because I'd like to support Amanda in her role for the rest of her term. And I'd also like to sort of help us improve our relationships, not there's any issues, but I think we'll always be better in life. So just to help sort of foster stronger relationships between councillors and staff and also councillors and councillors. So I think communication is always key and I just like us all to kind of talk to each other outside meetings a little bit more. So that's kind of my three aims.
Yeah, when I read through your application, Jacky, I really liked your focus on building relationships. I think it's always a good thing, isn't it? Good level of listening, understanding and communication is key, as you said. And I don't doubt at all that you've worked really hard to make it as good as it can be, which not only benefits all of us, but the community as well, if we're working better together. So, yeah, I'm good.
I was second to that. He's all I've got to step up then.
Okay, so before we go to a vote, I just need to double check if there's anybody that wants to put themselves forward tonight, because that is an option as well. So I'm just going to ask for a hands up in support of Jacky. Please, to the microphone, please.
You can wipe your mouth.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Number eleven. To note the delegated decision taken under urgency procedures by the town park for BSTC to be the lead partner and accountable body for the lottery funding bids submitted by Bude Climate Partnership.
So a few words of introduction as I took the decision on behalf of following consultation, or we'll add. Clearly, this was something which came up on the rails, probably feedback from the lottery to the partnership. We are a partner in the partnership, but we haven't actually expected to be the lead in terms of the putting the bid. It is fundamentally procedural, but does have got to give us as a council some responsibilities as the accountable body, that the funds would flow through the council and onto the partnership and the delivery items. But still, it is something that will be managed by the partnership. Actually, at this stage, it's a bid, so we're not going to get too excited about it because we now need to wait for the lotteries to come back and say yea or nay or how much or such. So at this stage, it's a bid being put in on behalf of the whole partnership. They're making their commitment to the council at this time. So to say really, it's, at this stage, we are at that point. It's just going to require that decision.
Yes. I'm actually disappointed not to be able to properly like talk it through, like as in like, you know, in formal setting as well, and also for the public to have that say during that meeting as well. I understand where that came from. But I think there is a opportunity here to really sort of allow other beauty groups that same sort of, not necessarily the time pressure, but I'm on about the same sort of opportunity. I feel myself know that there's, you know, a few projects around the town that when if they had someone that was able to be that key partner to enable the funding part to happen much easier, then we would have a lot more things happening around town, basically. So I think there needs to be like a proactive like thing that we have to do here to put on for the oversight, to figure out where it could fit, but to like do a policy around this, like this type of opportunity, I guess, of being partners for various bids, specifically around the financial partner.
Facilitators.
Yeah, like facilitators. I don't know how to like word it, I guess. Just to enable that sort of, that's of course, also to decide if the council would want to do that. Like, or if actually want to stay well away from it. So I don't think it's obviously tonight, but it needs to be there at some point, basically.
Yes, Peter.
Yeah, I don't see that we've got any option other than to endorse and note the town park's decision. But I do like councillors' good regret, the fact that we were pushed into a corner on this one. And I think that we should have had the opportunity to thoroughly debate and understand the situation that we're getting ourselves into. However, we are where we are and we probably would have all voted for it anyway. But it is important to know, as councillors' good sense going forward, the nature of the relationships we have with other outside bodies as time goes forward. And I think that's something we should all be a bit thinking. And I completely agree with you. This time.
In the way that we have moved from giving very small grants to giving some quite substantial amounts of money. And that perhaps hasn't had maybe the level of publicity that it needed. And maybe we haven't done a particularly great job at sifting through who gets granted and who doesn't. Perhaps in the modern age, giving grants is just a very blunt thing. And being able to facilitate access to lottery funding and other things is something that councils at this level can be more useful to outside bodies too. And maybe we should adapt our thinking to being, you know, towards that. So we create a full sifting process of whatever kind, where people can come to us and go through a systematic procedure to decide if we're going to kind of back them in lottery bids and other funding bids.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you. Did you?
Yes, I would just like to also say that I rather feel that we weren't given long enough to look at this properly or to discuss it properly. And it might be a bit of a word of language, but I sort of feel it's been a bit of a shotgun wedding. And it would be nicer to have had a look at the detail more. My biggest worry with getting into any financial sort of backing in some way is to try to make sure that we're not the ones funding it and then expecting to be paid later. Because I could see that ending up.
That's lots of questions, yeah.
Yeah, but just putting it in the picture generally.
That's just part of it. Clearly, I also wish we were in this situation. I much prefer the council taking the decision and having that debate. It was a combination of factors, the fact we couldn't actually call a meeting because of the national warning, that we couldn't call a meeting any other time in the year. We could have had an emergency meeting and tabled this, but that is the hand that we were dealt. Yeah, it was short tide scale. It was unexpected. So it's been, we had to react to and deal with. I've spent time, I've also spent time really, the Bude Climate Partnership has a relatively new chair. And it's also as a kind of a relatively newcomer to in terms of not an established partner, but a new pair of eyes that I've met with him. And he also is very keen to keep a good view of the progress and overview. So I know, I think, you know, I'm reasonably assured, and I hope the council will be reasonably assured around that. And in fact, it's not our money, the council, but there is some office of time involved. And we've talked about that in terms of, but fundamentally, this is money coming from, you know, places of success. We'll come from the lottery, we'll come to us in advance and it'll be passed on to the partners to deliver against the plan. So it's not town council money that's being committed.
Thank you, please. And Jackie, did you?
Yeah, just a quick one, really, just one to Kevin, but it's something that we may discuss when we go on to item thirteen.
But one of the suggestions that came from the recent forum was that we helped to facilitate other community groups applying for grants, which could bring a lot more money into the town. So, we'll probably discuss that later. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, obviously, you all sit all, my email, we're at this. Pretty much in agreement. Everybody else, I'm deeply uncomfortable with the way this has happened. It's not open, it's not honest, and the public should have had the opportunity to see us debate it. But I feel like I've got a sharp going against my head. I don't generally respond well to that, but here we are.
Yeah, I think I just want to reiterate what Keith says, really, you know. He, I felt that he did as much as he could do in the situation we had, you know, he put it out with an email to everybody, please communicate your thoughts on this, and acted on that, met with me, and we discussed it all. My first question to Keith was, how do you feel about it? How do you feel? Because I trust Keith and I value his opinion completely, and we talked through the risks and everything else, and that was kind of all we could do in that situation with the time scale we had. So, I too hope everybody feels reassured with the decision. I think it's a really good thing for Beoud. Without us facilitating it, would it happen? It's an awful lot of money for Beoud to kind of lose out on, I feel, you know. So, anyway, we need to, did I get as far as proposing that we note?
Yep.
No? Oh, yes, Vicki.
Could I just say, would it be possible at all for us to have a bit more discussion at some point about the implementation of it? Because I've been thinking about it, looking at the way it's meant to be setting out, I feel in the current climate with the energy crisis, et cetera, that perhaps there's some aspects of it that perhaps ought to be brought more to the fore, which I see the people of Beoud feel more benefit than the major thrust of it, which does, to me, yes, it benefits the people of Beoud, but it doesn't seem to be aimed at them particularly.
We're not directly involved with the actual execution of it, but...
Yeah, I think that, just to be clear, as one said, we are a partner within the partnership, and councillor Deary is the nominated councillor on the partnership from town council, but in one sense, we are only one partner of the partnership, and this invitation, maybe the fact that the lead body, as it were, might be slightly misleading, is that we are not being asked to take control of the project.
But I can share with my point of view, that might be an aspect that we have to be, for Vicki to knock that out.
John, the partner, can take that on board, but actually, at this stage, fundamentally, if the bid is in, it's now with the lottery, if they feel something like that, they will direct where the money's at best. So, if they feel something is not doing better or doesn't meet their criteria, they won't, but again, I don't know how the lottery work, and they might well be entirely the opposite and say, this is new and exciting and something different, and we want to fund that because of that. So, we're very much now in the hands of the lottery as to what they decree as they'll give funds to, and then that's what has to be delivered, what they give funds to.
If anyone has any questions, or email, basically, with any of that. Because I do feel comfortable with it, but we're not the driving force, as Keith said, we're part of the partnership, so it's a wider, it's a wider communication thing. It's not just because we're the partner, we're, like, driving the direction of what projects would be prioritized over others. So, if you've got any specific questions about it, then absolutely please email me, and I'll take it to the next meeting, which I've not written down, but it's not that long away. And, yeah, I will do my best to feedback your concerns and share your thoughts, because that's literally my role. But I just want to kind of go back to Keith and Amanda's points. I do feel really comfortable with it, and I have sat in more meetings that go into more detail, but obviously, I saw those documents at the same time as Keith did, so we were all seeing that at the same time. Like, no one's had any kind of, I just want to reassure everyone that there's no, like, I feel like scrutiny is appropriate, and actually, our little new chair, I feel like will be even more, like, rigorous in that scrutiny process, if that makes sense. If there are any things that you feel uncomfortable with, just let me know, and I will take it back to lunch, please do, because that's what my role is, so, yeah.
Thanks, Sharon.
That's Halloween, the next partnership meeting's happening.
That's the one.
Auspiciously.
So, I want to propose that we note the delegated decision. All those in favour? Did you count? And all those against and abstain?
I've got the abstentions.
Sorry.
Mike, you have abstained, Vicki, you have abstained, and Kim, do you?
Yeah, so everybody else is in agreement. Thank you, everybody. To consider the council's response to the consultation by the owners of Anmore Hotel on the potential redevelopment of part of the site to provide a care home. So, Shaun.
I mean, do I have to count? I've got some things written down that are my personal concerns, which may or may not be shared, I don't know. So, I've just written, like, a little list. I personally have concerns about the long-term future use of the site, and the local care needing match with the appropriate provision in this instance. And I also have concerns about alterations to the skyline and substantial development within the conservation zone. And lastly, I've written down, I would have, it would be my kind of ambition as a councillor and obviously chair of planning, to maybe invite the developer to have a conversation face to face with us as the councillor at some point in the future, perhaps, even in an extraordinary council meeting, to talk about the plans and to kind of scrutinize it as a council, because I feel like it's going to be a hot potato, and people will either love it or hate it, and we need to, you know, discuss it openly. This, what they've kind of provided is a very kind of corporate consultation tool, which is like getting a very small, like, first response to something before potentially going to official pre-app stage, or straight to full planning permission. So, yeah, it would be my ambition that we see it properly in the public, because at the moment, they're just gauging the public's view as to, like, how loud people are shouting about this, so.
And it's quite a small percentage of the surrounding area, it's 600 and something residents or something, which is quite a small sample. Okay, Katie?
I agree, but obviously, entirely agree here, but also, I think we're going to have to potentially think about how much staff time this might take if it is going to go to consultation, because it's not, because there's a usual Cornwall council consultation way, and I think there needs to be a real push here to ensure that that gets fulfilled, and people are actually filling that in, because it's, if it gets to that point.
I think, I'll be clear, it's not our consultation.
Yeah, I know.
It's not for us to undertake a consultation.
It's not for us to do the consultation, it's for us to guide people to that consultation that is going to be done, or hopefully will be done, or, you know, or at least when it does go to planning, here is the planning portal, and this is how you submit your ideas and pros and against. Yeah, I think that basically, there's going to be some comms around this, to ensure that. I mean, and personally, as a councillor, I think we should at least put a statement to say how concerned we are about this, to be trivialized, very concerned, and then how engaged and concerned we want to be.
Martin?
Yeah, I think my question was basically what Katie's getting at, actually, is what we can hope to achieve by debating this in this room, and what powers do we have? And, I mean, we are assuming, I think, that we're against it, but then we need to, if we have got powers and we've got something that we can actually do, then we need to debate it, otherwise, why are we debating it?
I think at this stage, it is expression of concern and the desire for more information. You know, I wrote a few things out, very similar, this to Shaun talking about, you know, what's the impact on the skyline going to be, because it doesn't actually give you that information. It's in a conservation area, how will the local community benefit exactly? Will there be any stipulations in it for local need primarily? What kind of care will it actually provide? Could it end up as very expensive apartments unaffordable to locals?
There's also...
The concern. But that is at this stage, because we don't know, we need to know more.
I have actually done my bit on their side today. And actually, seven hour waiting times for an ambulance is in Fletchbury last week, or the week before, is another concern that we should be really seriously considering, if we are having 50 people coming from, potentially, because it's going to be very expensive from outside of Beoud, and that's 50 more people who might be anxious.
Can I just give some advice? Because at the moment, this, why it's on the agenda is because the company behind it, or consultant that they hired, has put together a very brief piece of information, and have gone out to the public and have specifically written to us to ask for the town council's views. So, at this stage, it's not a planning application, so...
It's very litmus test, basically.
Yeah, it may never happen, who knows? And it's not, and it obviously, it is not within the council control, I mean, you'd be very clear, it's not something the council is ruled about in any way, it's not on council land, so it's a private sector person's looking, thinking and doing something, and they're asking for a view. The council can choose to give no view, but you can choose to give, you know, express its concerns. And my advice would be, if you are concerned, absolutely, you would say, and you would try it, and you would describe or give them questions as to these are the things you would like answered, or would like to see information coming back about, because at some point, either they will drop it because it doesn't work, or they will pursue and it will come through the planning process. But again, remember, it is not even this council that's controlling the planning process. You will have a chance to have your view and put that into Cornwall council's, the planning authority. But at this stage, it highlights it to both councillors, so you can express a view, it highlights it hopefully to the public more than the immediate houses that got that communication, so it just makes awareness.
Yeah, thank you.
I didn't see, I saw hands, but I didn't see who it was. Was it Vicki?
Yeah, I would just say that I'm concerned about this, whether we can use the neighbourhood plan to help fight against it. Looking at the sketch plan that they had shown of it, from what I could work out, the community room, the view from the community room, was the whole opposite going up from the car park, and where the fantastic view would be, according to their plan, was all back of house facilities. Yeah, I know.
Exactly, this, that has no real meaning at this stage, you know, it's not what is proposed to be built, and as I pointed out, we're not even seeing any profile, so we don't even know how it impacts on it.
But if I was trying to want it to be seen in a good light, I would be trying to tick boxes, to do those sorts of things.
Yeah, the interesting thing for me is that the suggestion is coming forward from a developer rather than a provider, and historically, we've seen so many times in the planning committee, developers come forward with a proposal, which they've then morphed into something entirely different, and I feel that this could be one of those cases, if I'm honest. I personally don't need any more detail at all to know that I think any development in that area is a big no-no for me, and I think that we ought to give a very clear message, if I'm honest, from this council today.
Yes.
I was, I was sitting on my hands a little bit on this one, because I was a little bit reluctant to, as a corporate body of Beoud Stronger and Gower council, prejudging the issue and being perceived to have a sort of dog in the fight, but my true and honest opinion is no, we should have extreme concerns over that site. I, like Pete, believe that the idea of building a care home that would be occupied by local people, funded by local authority, is highly unlikely and makes little commercial sense, and I've chosen my words carefully. We all know what we fear. We fear that these people want a block of luxury apartments, and they're trying clever way of getting it, and I have extreme concerns, as I believe most of you does. But as a care professional, I would normally be putting people to bed about now, that on the other flip side, there is an urgent need for more affordable care places in the community, and if this was a genuine application, to provide affordable care places, and if even affordable care place is a fantastic sea view in a conservation area, then that might be a different conversation, I might have a different opinion.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you, Kelly. Okay, Shaun?
Can I just kind of, like, morph everything into, like, a proposal then, if that's right, to share our strong concerns about the list of things and our extreme concerns?
Yeah, what's a good word, everyone likes.
Extreme, strong.
Extreme, extremely strong concerns about the long-term future use of the site, local affordable care need being matched with appropriate provisions.
If you've got them written down.
If you want, but I feel like there were some other ones that I hadn't got written down.
I wanted to say that the site was entirely inappropriate for development, that gravity or that scale is.
Okay. Is that a proposal?
It's an addition, which I think Shaun is absorbing into hers.
If you react something in there as well, that if they're going to consult their neighbours in an area like that, their neighbours are the entire town.
Yes.
This isn't hidden away on the housing estate, it's an area that we will all walk past many, many times.
I agree, you'd want the consultation to be wider than what it is.
There are plans on the vote sustain for elderly provision, I don't quite know if they got, but... Sorry, I feel like everyone's picking on Cornwall council, can I meet it? Yeah, you know, that's a conversation for the entire town, not immediate neighbours, I would suggest.
Yeah, so I'm just working down why it would reach in consultation, and then is it worth putting in there about inviting them to present their...
And to receive questions, perhaps, that gives a bit of time, maybe, for the planning committee to put all of our concerns into a proper list of questions for them.
Is that okay, we put that in there as well? I mean, it's all John.
Martin?
Can I suggest just a brief edition of concerns about the pressure on local infrastructure?
Yes, very.
To be clear, the town council was going to express extreme concern over the long-term use of the site. There's a need to match affordable care places, provision of affordable care places in the community, there's concerns over pressure on the infrastructure. We would, we would consider the site inappropriate for the sterile development.
Alterations to the skyline and substantial development in the conservation zone, which is...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I remember a bit, yeah. And then we have the requiring the wider, wider, broad consultation across the whole town.
Yeah, and extending the invitation to develop it.
Yeah, I've written that.
To receive questions.
Sorry.
Sorry, I'm just making sure that everyone's as clear as we can be, bringing that together. And in essence, to me, that obviously is going to happen, is I obviously...
Yes, yeah.
It may be that this, at this stage, is not a plan.
Maybe you need extreme from the side of mine.
So, the proposal is that we supply that for the majority. No. Yeah. All those in favour then? All those against and abstain? Thank you, everybody. Yes, I was wondering, would that be in time? Yes, if you don't mind, I'm sorry to delay you slightly here, Ian. I wanted to bring something forward in the agenda, because I know you've come along to hear that bit, so... along to hear that bit, so if we get that done, then that, shoot after if you want to. So, sorry? Um, so I'd like to bring number eighteen, Agenda item eighteen, forward to now this, um, which is to approve the sealing of the lease on Crookett's former beach office with the two-minute foundation.
If I just introduce, this is the conclusion of a long, painful legal process of which everyone seems to be probably in agreement, but, um, unless it be the lawyers that take time to bring that onto paper. Um, so there has been no, there's been no dispute about this, it's just been, uh, one of these complications, it's been a three-way process with our, you know, Cornwall Council, who are ultimate landlords, and therefore we need to get permission for anything we wants to do via them. So, really, the, you know, the terms, heads of terms of this were agreed many months ago, and this is the formal end of that process for the council to agree with the sealing of the lease. Um, it's not really a point of opening debate of the terms or anything like that, please.
Yes, Katie. Then I propose that we, is it sealing the lease?
Yep.
I propose that before we seal the lease, then.
I'll say it now.
Yeah.
No, I...
Sorry, I thought you...
I, I won't give a lengthening explanation, but there are elements of it that I'm unhappy with.
Oh, okay.
But, but there we go, it doesn't matter, I don't, I don't feel that I would have influenced the council, so I'm happy just to abstain.
Abstain, sorry, that's my fault, I thought you had your hand up. So that was, yes, all good, all good, all good. Thank you very much. No worries. Okay, back to the, uh, so number thirteen, to receive the report commissioned on the provision of money and debt advice to include a provision of more spaces within the parish over winter and agree any associated actions and expenditure over up to...
Well, thank you, I'll do stand-up, and I have done now, um, every time. I'll never stop saying, I'll never stop saying. Uh, well, first of all, I'd like to apologise for, um, you only really receiving the first draft of it today. I had intended to get it to you earlier, so you had longer to look at it. Um, those of you who attended the emergency or extraordinary meeting might remember that my remit for what I was asked to do grew somewhat during that particular meeting. Um, and some of the work that I've done, um, in preparing this has also been around the warm rooms, I'm getting my excuses in early, but, um, so I have done a few extra days with respect to warm rooms, so that's why it's been slightly, um, later than I've, I've intended. Um, it's also not been easy to write this, in, in the sense that, um, as I'm sure you're aware, this is a sort of ever-changing situation, and new announcements from the government, in fact, new governments, um, have come, in, indeed, in the short, comparatively short period of time that I've done this report, um, the UK's enjoyed two monarchs and two prime ministers, but anyway, uh, that's another story. Um, and it's actually been, um, it's not been most enjoyable in the sense of the subject matter, it's, it's, you know, I'm sure you can all appreciate that it's a quite difficult sort of subject. Um, but it has been a really useful exercise, and, and I hope those of you who attended the forum, and thank you, um, those that were able to come, um, that was so well received by those who attended, um, and I think it was really helpful for representatives of all those organisations to learn what each other did, and I think as a council, you should pat yourselves on the back for bringing those people together, uh, doing that. And, and by the same token, whilst it's not entirely, uh, what the council has delivered on its own, it has helped to push the agenda, um, which saw the Blanmsmiths to trust make an offer of ten thousand pounds for Citizens Advice, um, to allow to return in...
I'm really sorry, there's a car, there's a black polo in the car park, someone's left the lights on.
Oh, that's mine.
VKJ.
Thank you. One day a week, sorry.
This has allowed the Citizens Advice to, uh, to return to Wewd for one day a week, not sure entirely when, probably in November, um, but also, in, in undertaking this exercise, the council's also helped to push the agenda and secure seven and a half thousand pounds of funding for the Neetside Community Centre's warm space as well. So, um, as I said, not a direct thing that the council has delivered, but, but has been instrumental in helping to, um, secure, so again, pat yourselves on the back for that. Um, so, to the recommendations in the report, uh, these really stem mostly from what people had said at the forum. Towards the end of the forum, we asked, um, what would the outcomes you'd like to see from this exercise, from bringing people together, from concentrating people's minds, focusing on how we're going to address the cost of living crisis, but also the recommendations have been in some part informed by the consultation that I've done, um, in meeting with lots of different people, uh, since the middle of August. Um, so we have them there, there's six of them, so I'll just cut straight to those recommendations, I'm not going to go through the whole report with you. Um, the single most important thing, I think, that, that people felt that Wewd needed, and this isn't to duplicate what Citizens Advice would do, it's to complement that, is having somebody who is trained and insured, which is important, and able to help people with inquiries, whether that's to signpost them to somewhere else, to fill in a form for them, to help them with a blue badge application, um, and perhaps, as Jackie alluded to earlier, if they're a group rather than a person, to help them secure funding, so they can then in turn help more people themselves. So, a person was, was a recommendation, a strongly made recommendation, um, from, from Neetside Community Centre group and various other groups, who said that that would be helpful. Um, the second thing, which you've already kicked off, is to improve communication between the organisations that are in Wewd or wider than Wewd, um, so they can understand what they do, um, what each, each of them do. And one of the things that came from the forum was a desire for those groups to meet again, possibly twice a year, um, and to have that forum, uh, held at least twice a year. Um, the third recommendation was something that was already in the pipeline, which was to produce a leaflet, a directory of information, um, help lines, um, websites, what have you, that people can access over the, over the coming winter to help them. But in addition to that, for that, that directory to also include and ask for help from the community, for if people want to volunteer, um, what came out very clearly from the forum is that people don't want charity, and they don't want to feel like charity, they want to be able to help as well. So that was, um, that was an important part for that. Um, and with that, that brings us to encouraging a greater number of people to volunteer. This is a bit of a tricky one. Um, it would be really helpful if we could encourage a greater number of people to volunteer, but what also was expressed at the forum is that people's time to volunteer is diminishing because they're working more, two, three, maybe more jobs, their time to volunteer at the moment is, is tricky, and that's one of those vicious circles, much like the food bank, which is having diminishing donations because people don't have so much money to give to the food bank. So, um, just one of those things, unfortunately. Um, but if, if we could encourage more people to volunteer, and I must say, must mention the Volunteer Open Day on the eighteenth of October at the Neetside Centre, um, where opportunities to give your time will be, uh, displayed. Um, and then finally, uh, work collectively as organisations operating Wewd in Strathern, um, I think this was Martin's point from the forum, but also made by others, to identify those groups, people, um, that may have been missed, that we may miss, that may have not been reached by help so far, or for whatever reason are able to access help. They could be people who don't use the internet particularly, or at all, um, or they could be other groups. One of the really interesting statistics for me, from the Citizens Advice in terms of the people that they had helped, that's in this report, is that two-thirds of the people that came to them were women, and only one-third were men. And does that suggest that men are less inclined to seek help with financial problems? Alternatively, it might suggest that women are more likely to have, I don't know, but, uh, that will need some more investigation. But, but again, perhaps men are, are one of those overlooked groups that we, we need to focus on. So those, ladies and gentlemen, councillors, are your recommendations, um, and I commend the report to the House or something. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian, thank you very much, thank you for all your work.
That's all. Oh, and I should say, thank you to the councillors that helped, in particular Jackie and Martin, but all the other councillors who helped me, thank you.
Yes, um, so one of the recommendations was to have that one person, or potentially a team of people, but also, I know that, uh, Keith you mentioned before about that the office is getting a lot of Cornwall Council requests as well, which is quite interesting, because you mentioned blue badge, like being access, access to the badge, and part of it was also potentially helping with, like, onboarding people with digital, so I can do basic services and stuff. Um, I'm wondering if actually there, there is someone that we could go, I mean, obviously the Cornwall Council said they're reducing down the amount of services, but actually should we explicitly now formalise a potential job-like description of someone we would like, and literally just start asking our Cornwall councillors about if can we actually request that we get some funding, or can you supply someone like this? Uh, at least as a first initial step towards that first recommendation.
I think Martin's got something to say.
We'll start to answer that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, should, should we wait and, and we can talk about it if it comes up?
Yeah, I'll come in junior second, Martin, if that's all right, and I'll just take the questions that were before, if Katie's done.
Just a very quick point, just wanted to make, you know, the enormous amount of work is put into this, it's actually...
Well, I'd also like to thank the council for the help, tremendous work.
We started with some, with some aims, and I think they were achieved, it's a shame that we have to do this work. That's the fundamentals, but, but we are where we are, and I, I feel we're, we are in a better position now going forward into the winter, or autumn winter, than we would have been, so hopefully we'll, we'll, yeah, be ready.
Yes.
For numbers tall, but, uh, yeah, it's really good work, thank you.
Yeah. Peter, okay?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Ian as well, I mean, I, I did manage to actually read the broadside thing, I just, I've been scrolling through it again, and it makes an awful lot of sense, and it was a, a very true reflection, I think, of that meeting that we had, which was a, a really good session, I, I, I don't want to say I enjoyed it, but it, it, it was, it was a good exercise, it was worth having. Um, I, I totally agree that we should be facilitating, um, the community to be able to access this information, but I do worry about another paid role within the council, and, and wonder whether or not it might be something that we could deliver through our library staff, I'm sure not, there's, there's probably thinking there's already been done on this, but I think that if we sought some further external funding and support, perhaps from Cornwall Council, because there are funding streams, I think with support with civil activity, we might be able to perhaps put something together with our existing staff, but we'd need to talk about...
Yes, the implications.
The implications on their title.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I might be jumping ahead, and some of this stuff might be already sort of been thought about, but I firmly believe that the single best use of the resources of this council is to provide an officer directly employed, gets his paycheck from Bucram County Council, who is responsible, who is that person, that link, that can talk to people face-to-face and put them in touch with the services that they need. And whatever pay grade it needs to be, that's where it needs to be, and wherever they've got to sit or have a building, that's where they need to sit. Uh, I think that is the single most important thing we can do for a community ahead of the plain arc, ahead of the canal and harbour, ahead of everything else, because the way things are going, with everything going online, with a lot of people just not being aware of the help that's out there, and not knowing where to go to. And, and Peter's already said that Cornwall Council are withdrawing to the, to the citadel, and we ain't in the citadel, we are in the far out reaches of the Shire, and if we don't do stuff, if we don't provide that service, I don't think anybody else will, not to the same extent. There might be a little bit of funding for a little chap in a charity that opens up once a week on a Thursday afternoon, but for there to be a permanent position, Monday to Friday, nine to five, the only show in town is if we fund it, we employ it, we do all the insurances on it, we do all the training on it, it belongs to us. And I think what this survey is saying, at the top of the list, we need to take ownership of that.
Thank you, Gillian. Martin?
Um, I completely agree, actually, um, and I've come to that, uh, and I think we've been leading to that. So, I'm, I'm going to give you a board, a quick update on the warm rooms. And first of all, I apologise if anybody's felt left out, I'm not really know what's going on with it. Basically, the last month or so has been information gathering and trying to nail what we can actually do, um, and the staff, Cal, Tracy, Poppy, have been working really, really hard to, to, to help me put together this, what is now a fourteen-page document of what's going on in Wewd that people couldn't access, um, which is, it's been really great, so thanks to them, and also to Ian as well, for putting this in touch with amazing people, um, one of which I spoke of this afternoon, Step Into Learning, who are based in Lawton, have committed, uh, one person, three days a week, to our warm room project to act as that person. So that's great, you're right, that's, it's a small charity stepping up to fill in a few, you know, but it's a star. Um, so, uh, basically, um, we've been planning this leaflet, um, and working on how we, how we sort out the, the warm rooms provision. First of all, I've decided, we have decided, to throw out the idea of warm rooms because it's patronising, so it's open house. That's the idea, if anybody wants to talk about it in another time in the forum, that's fine, but for the moment, it's, it's open house, and open house sessions, if you like, will be put on, this is where we've got to, although I think it might have changed this afternoon, um, Monday at the Park House, and we have a room that's free, Tuesday, Neetside with their grant money, and at the Tree in Stratton, so the Tree and have pledged to open up from Tuesday to Saturday, um, from ten till four, I believe, I couldn't correct me, I'm wrong, um, and also, Neetside have got three days, so we've got, um, Monday, Park House, Tuesday, Neetside and Tree in Stratton, Wednesday, Neetside and Tree, Thursday, Neetside and Tree, although it's changed, um, Friday, Park House, uh, perhaps, and Tree in Stratton, and then Saturday, Tree in Stratton, and on Sunday, some church activities are available. So we've also had all an input from, uh, Peter, yes, um, who's told us all about the, the provision that they have for, uh, for coffee mornings and for free breakfasts, and it's all inputted into this.
Just five chairs.
Yeah. So, and it's, it's been inputted into this, which is basically seven days a week of, um, what's available. Is it free? Um, yes or no? And if it isn't free, what cost is, what you have to do to get there, um, sorry, not get there, what you have to do to get involved, um, and if there is anything else, uh, as an additional value on that, on that thing. So for example, Wewd Library, which is, uh, um, not committing to become a warm room as such, but they are open house, um, they have a new person who is every other Wednesday, one to three, can help with computers. We know that computing is a problem for a large number of people here, the report says so. Interestingly, Jackie from Polesworth Community Transport said they sent out a survey a few years ago about, I think, a hundred requests, would you like to order your, your transport online? Three people said yes, and that's out of a hundred and twenty people who use community transport in, in Wewd, Wewd specifically, so they're really focused on this. Um, and they're, what I've, I've spoken to them today, they've committed to being able to bring people to the open houses. So they wouldn't, so say for example, if there's a knitting group at Park House on Wednesday, they won't pick people up and bring them to that, they'll bring them to the Park House on a Monday, and then they'll have the chance to go to either the Tree or Neetside on a Tuesday, for example, and, and we have agreed to fund that, and that's really great, they're really happy about it. It works within their system, so we use their, people will be invited to phone them up, use their booking system, it's no skin off their nose really, apart from we help to keep them going, which is even better, um, and we don't have to do anything. Uh, and what's great about the work that we've been doing is that it's actually officer time and Ian's time that we've used up, and actually, we've actually managed to get seventeen and a half grand in funding through doing this, so it's been really beneficial. Um, so we've started to sort of look at putting this together, um, I'm talking to a designer who's worked previously for the Castle, to start, put, put together a look and feel, everybody will have a chance to look at that in the coming week or so, I believe. Um, uh, and the other thing is that in the copy of, of this, anybody's welcome to have this, but I haven't circulated it because it still needs, you know, I only got the information from Neetside this afternoon, so it was too late to be able to put that into this document to print it out. But, um, the tone of it, I've tried to keep it really friendly and open, and actually, um, with an emphasis on, how about getting involved? And if you get involved, you can come along, make a few cups of tea for people, and stick your phone on charge, and stay warm, that's, that's the approach we're taking, so we're trying to do volunteer and recipient, if you like, at the same time, in order to de-stigmatise it. It's been, it's been quite difficult, but it, but we, we think it works, um, and everybody's, will see this in the next few days. Um, going on to this, we think we have identified the need, as shown in the Depp Forum Report, for bodies to be available to help with form filling. Now, we had, um, we have in the budget some money for a coordinator, we, uh, there's somebody who's maybe able to do one day a week... We, there's somebody who's maybe able to do one day a week, who we're talking to. And I guess everybody will have a chance to talk about that as well. And we really feel it's important. So, I think Helen's absolutely bang on with this. There is a need for people to have help form filling, help getting on the internet, you know, all those kind of things. It's, everybody said it. And this is why Step Into Learning have said today, they will commit to three days. They would provide employment advice, CME creation, replying to official letters and form completion, enabling clients to get online. So, we have to try and get some computers for these places so people can get online. And also, support about raising awareness of online dangers when using the internet, particularly scanning for all the people who aren't so savvy about these kind of things. They also, interestingly, want to talk to us at another day. I think it's not, it's too, we have to get this out too quickly to be able to make that happen. And that's about us setting up a counselling service to offer six hundred hours of counselling for Bude free to them and a cost to us. But I think it's worth considering having them come and talk to us about that. Because counselling is another thing that we know people do have issues, often have mental health issues. And they're setting up schemes where they're doing counselling, ten-hour sessions. And then in order to get people into work from there, they are talking about setting up gardening groups and walking groups and cooking groups. And this is something that I think the warm rooms project could expand into really easily because it's community. So, we should talk to them about that. I'm almost done. So, Polesworthy Community Transport, I've spoken about that. The next stage really is just to compete, keep compiling this information. It keeps changing and it's still coming in. And I'm doing my best to stick it into a document so we can get a first look in the next week or so. Can, is that optimistic?
I think so, I think it's achievable.
But things are shaping up. People have been really, really enthusiastic about it. I mean, the fact that the Tree are offering to to do this for us is fantastic. Lorraine has gone out and bought teas and coffees and biscuits for it, so we're supplied, which is wonderful, brilliant. And it just feels like we shouldn't be hoping to do it. And it's a disgrace that we are. But, you know, it's time for our community to step up and I think it's, you know, they have and they will. And I hope everyone supports it. And if anyone's got any questions, I will probably put together an online meeting next week to discuss all these kind of stuff, if anybody wants to. Again, I apologise for the sort of radio silence. We've just been trying to get the information.
You, yes, Katie?
I guess the only thing I want to point out is part of group growth, there was an application that's already closed. So, Cornwall Council were up to 1.5 million on digital inclusion. So, that is training people on computers, that's access to digital services, some society, health, education, training, employment. So, we should be seeing who's got that, I'm guessing pretty soon.
Can we help you find out?
Well, that's, that's, that's the question I was going to ask. Council representatives, because obviously, I know for a fact, because I was talking to a few people about this before. Because obviously, Wildernet approached us a while ago with that exact thing about buying computers and things like that for this project, so.
So, Step Into Learning are talking to Wildernet. They were talking, he was talking to me about that today.
Yes. So, I assume that's part of that same programme. So, I think they engage Wildernet. So, I'm hoping part of it is, hopefully, they've, this is, hopefully, they've been successful, basically.
Their offering to us is to help, is to help people go online. So, it's that digital inclusion you're talking about.
Yeah.
We just have to provide computers. So, they actually do have a lender laptop scheme, but I don't think that's running yet. Yeah, that's through Wildernet as well, I believe.
Yeah, so I'm thinking, hopefully, because this only closed six in September. So, I'm guessing with like a month of contracts and things like that, we should find out pretty soon. And then hopefully, part of that is, because specifically it says in here, like, the Cornwall Council expects people to supply access to devices and lending library and things like that. So, that's exactly what we're after, right?
Yeah.
That's the digital side anyway.
Thank you, that's brilliant. I mean, if we could find it out, that'd be amazing. Because we do need to, we do need to put computers in there and we do need people to help people with them. That's one of the biggest problems. So, the other thing that I neglected to mention, I think Cal will put me right on this. The idea is that we will start in kind of soft launch, if you like, with social media, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth?
There's talk of trying to hit the beginning of half-term, that was suggested in Stratton, but.
Well, that's pretty big, getting it into people's, onto people's doorstep. That won't happen for a few weeks afterwards. So, it might well give us a little bit of time to kind of do the final panicky adjustments to, you know, we need all the shit we need not, sorry, more of that, or we need less of the council. So, that, those are the kind of thoughts. I don't know if I need to ask the council anything other than.
That was gonna be my next question. Do you need anything from us?
I don't know. I think it's worth debating having somebody, employing somebody. I really do, because it's going to happen. It's not gonna happen. We can, that need is there. CAB is gonna be one day a week, is that right?
Yeah, okay. So, it's funded?
It is funded, yeah. Yeah, so maybe we should consider. I mean, One Stop Shop used to be here, didn't it? Tracy's been telling them before.
I agree. Can't choose a centre, I think.
Can I just, again, remind us, because there's obviously a number of things all intertwined in here. The council's already resolved a budget of forty thousand pounds in terms of a one-off budget for the programme. And I use this term again, actually. It did delegate the, in consultation with the steering group that was set up, which was a good number of the councillors and a few members of the public, set up the original group. So, there's a mechanism for honing all of this down in the next week or two into this is what it adds up to and this is how it's all coming together. So, you don't have to resolve that this evening, is one thing. I think I will just, and I would probably say at this stage, given all this information and the fact that there is some provision probably coming through within that programme, what we just talked about. And there's obviously these other bits of provision popping up over the, it's probably worth taking stock of that before you kind of commit to doing a particular thing around posting. And I'd like to remind you that next week, we will have our first of our budget meetings around. And I would also advise you, put my RFO hat on, that, you know, you need to be very clear before you make long-term commitments about how all the funding stacks up.
Yeah.
Because there are some, this year's budget, probably what gave you surprise is there are a number of challenges. And you need to be very clear as to whether resources are going and how it's going to cost us. So, I wouldn't do things on the hoof, as it were, without thinking.
It's all within budget, well within.
Oh, yes, this programme, that's great.
Well, well, well within budget so far.
Yeah, that, and that's fine. Let's say in terms of if we, if you're going to create posts, I would.
That's a different.
I would advise let's actually work out what that post looks like in terms of hours and grades and how it fits into the overall budget.
There is, there is something in the budget for a part-time coordinator. So, actually, that's what we have been considering. Haven't even talked about somebody full-time to encalibrate, so that's, that's the. We feel that we need somebody in each warm room every day to be able to, you know, police it, manage it, make it friendly and homely and all that kind of stuff. So, Step Into Learning does part of that. And maybe we need to consider what happens for the rest of it. We still don't know.
Kevin and Katie?
I mean, I might not be using quite the right technical accounting terms. But having demanded sort of more detail and more explanation before I was prepared to put my hand up to funding last meeting, my position may have seemed to kind of flip-flop. It probably has to some extent. But I justified it to myself in that what we agreed in terms of forty thousand pounds is at least in my mind a contingency that can be drawn upon by this council and community groups where need is established during this winter. So, that's kind of where we're at with this particular project. With this wider consultation exercise and information gathering exercise, we have identified as top of the list of that a position. Now, we have been as council quite free in spending some money out over the last budgetary period. And I might be a bit of a budgetary hawk in many respects. But I believe what has been identified in that document is a clear and pressing need that the community is telling us that they need somebody, they need a human being that they can go and talk to. And the only organisation that I can say that is positioned to provide that consistently moving forward is going to be this council. So, I think we would, maybe not, maybe it's not something we can resolve tonight. But we should at least think about presenting a post, maybe, maybe one of the things within that twenty thousand quid contingency is we look at how this post can be created, what it's going to cost, where they're going to sit, what they're going to do. Because the community are saying that we need it. They're not really saying so much that they need some of the other things we've done, but they are saying that we really need this.
Thank you. Yes, Katie?
I was gonna address, there is probably something we can do, which is, whereas that, the employment committee? Employee, employment, staffing committee, that's the word, would actually start to, like, see that, basically. See into that in terms of, you know, in terms of budget potentially, because obviously this would be after the budget anyway. So, I'm just saying that we actually do start to discuss that in the next employment committee, staffing committee. And I'm guessing, we don't necessarily have a strict time for that right now, do we, like?
It's one of the schedules of, you know.
So, time-wise, it's probably a bit late for this, really. I don't know if it's possible to potentially do. Basically, we figure out what's within the budget or done a step of the budget and then potentially have to call an extraordinary staffing one to then be able to put something up to full council if we decide we want to take on someone.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah, basically.
Lots of other conversations happening.
Yeah, I mean, it feels to be like a consistent person and a voice to oversee the project. You know, when it comes to things like ideas, amazing ideas, you know, giving free haircuts, these are the kind of things that are gonna get people to come in. I don't have the time to do that. Cal doesn't have the time to do that, you know. So, sorry, Keith.
Stop giving us the speaker, I just say, we're maybe getting cross purposes in. I think there's two things under consideration here. One is the kind of the coordinator role for the open house.
Yes, which is already under.
And we've got provision for that within, as a one-off within, I hope.
Yes, there is.
That's in a moment, we've, you know, we've got a single one-off budget set aside to do that. So, that's kind of, that I think can, that can go ahead and we don't, I would suggest we can go to staffing for that because it won't be a permanent full-time post. We will just work out what's needed for a period as a one-off in the first instance. And then, then you have another conversation around the wider implications of the money debt advice report. And kind of all of them, taking all the other provisions which are there and kind of where the gaps are, et cetera, et cetera, in time that we have with the budget and if there's any external funding, because we don't rule that out. So, there's, there's all those possibilities and I think that's, so that's slightly longer. It doesn't stop, you know, open house happening at all, that all goes through. And then you learn, and we get a little bit more time to work through the other ones to set up, if you wish.
Right? Just a quick thing. Do you have any idea how the coordinator, how much you would need from them at this point? I mean, I know it's gonna, you can't answer that long term.
I think we were sort of gonna try and suck it and see, won't we, to start with and see how it goes? Because we just don't know what, you know, the guy down at the Tree could be around, but he's not around. But then, one of those days, we have somebody from Step Into Learning. But again, Step Into Learning, they're professionals and they're sign partners, but I don't know, they're facilitators so much, you know. So, actually, we've got to discuss, discuss it.
We need an awful lot of volunteers as well.
Yeah, yeah.
And BOP, interested in helping as well, BOP in the community. So, we've been in touch with them today and I think we might get some.
So, it's happening all the time, isn't it?
Yeah, but it is, there's a lot more to do in terms of sourcing bodies.
And maybe the thing is that if we ask people to come up, step up and help make tea and come and be warm, that actually it will be a self-perpetuating thing and the community will take care of itself. We just don't know because we haven't done this before. Not many people have done this. So, it's interesting. But it would be nice to make sure that we can count the number, we can count how many people come through the door. Satisfaction, you know, are we doing things right? Are we patronising? Are we saying the right things? Are we missing people? All that kind of stuff is really valuable, I imagine.
Can I, sorry.
Just very quickly, and Keith has touched on it, about that there is a distinction here between having someone being able to facilitate the warm spaces and the longer-term ambitions from the study of having that person in place, which the community said they wanted. It's worth bringing council back to what it said it wanted me to do, which was to identify gaps in provision and suggest funding opportunities to fill those gaps. And it need not necessarily fall on the council to provide all of the funding or indeed any of the funding for that post. I may have been too subtle in the report and not saying, if you want these things, look at the funding page that I've planned. But just as an example, the National Lottery Community Fund, who you've already discussed this evening in a different guise, is an interesting change that I've noticed from the National Lottery Community Fund, having looked again at them in the process of putting the summary report together, is they're now openly saying they want to support projects which mitigate the effects of the cost of living crisis. That's a change. They didn't say that two or three months ago. And they are offering grants of up to ten thousand and they're easier to get funds. And then grants of over ten thousand, either for single organisations or partnerships, possibly town council, Neetside, citizens, but it's not for me to say. That you can access funding and a post could be part of that. So, it doesn't need, that's a longer-term goal. That won't be money available immediately. There'll be an assessment process, which can take quite a long time, as you found out. But bear that in mind. I did identify some funding as part of the job.
Can I go to Kate second?
Yeah, I think Ian almost answered what I wanted to say, but I still want to say it anyway. And I need to be very careful about how I express my words here because I could come across the wrong way by accident. And if I do, it's not intended. But, so, I would expect a council like us that observes gaps in provision to our community to do something about it, to take a leadership role, as has been done. Been done, perfect. For us then to stump up the money to do it, I think is actually then going into some quite shaky territory. But if the community wants it and they're happy for that money to come out of their pocket, we probably ought to ask them. So, I'm all for the sort of consultative pace to say that, you know, do you want us to be spending your money on this stuff that we think is a good idea? And I think, yes, that's fine. But this sort of exercise, I really see, under normal circumstances, we ought to identify the problem, take a leadership role and then somehow try to find the funding that isn't necessarily out of the pockets of people due. I do see that it's very important that it's done exactly right. But I'd rather be making sure that we apply for funding and getting money in from external sources that we could then support with opposite time and so on. And I, I hope that's the way this one pans out.
Okay. I guess interesting to Ian here, obviously, there's a, if we take on someone immediately, effectively, we wouldn't be able to play back that money later. That's the thing with the lottery. So, I'm guessing your wish would be here to let's crack on, move, actually try and apply for some of this stuff. Let's not just, let's just through the coordinator in some way or form, whatever.
For the council to debate and resolve.
But I'm basically trying to figure out how we can do that as swiftly as possible or if it's just part of this project already.
I will remind council that we do have a new member of staff joining us soon, or two in the future.
Basically, how do we just?
Who we might well ask again.
But doing that task now is what I'm suggesting. Like, is there a, literally now, like a decision now that we can just say, can we crack on and actually start to actually go for some of this funding then? Or do we, or leave it to the coordinator in some way, whatever? Just like, or just say, add to the previous decisions that we've done to say, and by the way, this project can also apply for grant funding if required?
At one level, I mean, I'm gonna give you an answer, I mean, many things. There is a resource issue now and this is why we have a new member of staff joining us shortly, because you couldn't, as I say, resolve what you wish today. I need to get budgets done next this week. There's no way I could also be applying for external funding.
There's also that coordinator as well.
Yeah, so we've got a whole, yeah, so there's a whole number of irons in the fire. I'm not sure. I'm not sure you necessarily need to resolve anything, you won't fall off the thought process, but as I say, there's no way that, that unless there is a volunteer or, there will be writing a big net now next week, a big one will be written next.
I mean, that's the point, it's that, I don't want to wait until the next month, basically. Like, I'm just very aware of the monthly, you know, I mean, wait until next month to do this, so if we have to call a drawing meeting to be able to apply for a grant, there's that.
We would need a five day grant stream to be applying to, I mean, we can do that without a resolution, in terms of finding it and such, I mean, we would probably want the council to be, you know, approving the grant going in, running on its space. I think actually you need a resolution.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to think.
Or we know what a resolution, let me think of it.
I'm going to go to Kevin, and then I need to try and wrap this up.
I'm just going to make a very simple, good sort of point, what's the point of this council? What is the actual point of this council? You cut the grass, yeah, keep the park as nice and clean, yeah, look after the exhibitions in the council, yeah. The public, we've commissioned, we do a lot, county, public authorities do a lot of commissioning people on a few, I don't know what you're earning, mate, you're probably well worth it, but we commission people, we commission people on short term projects, we're doing this lovely project, we're doing your warm rooms project with this, oh, it's only a short term, it's a short term thing, the guy's getting a chunk of this forty thousand, and then he comes away, so we don't have to worry about it. And we're all really good, not just this council, all councils, really good, at putting their hands up for contingency plans and looking into things, and we'll have a guy that spends a lot of time studying this. And then it comes to creating a permanent position where the guy's on the pension scheme, and he gets a uniform, and he gets a chair to sit in. And we go, who can't do that? That's way too much money, that's way too big a thing. And yet we've spent it all in dips and dabs on little research projects here and there, and when the community come back, and they say categorically to us, and I've heard this for years, this is no, no surprise, we want a person, we want a face we can talk to, we want it to be the same face in the same building, we don't want it to be Tuesday at three o'clock this week, and Friday at seven o'clock next week, and then it disappears because some funding stream has cut off. We want this person. And we've heard that from our community, and we as a body, you elected me as just a hander on. We as a body are on in and out, in a way we wouldn't be if we would just create a feasibility plan. And that to me makes me think, what is the point of us? And that's just a philosophical point, I just want to put it out there.
Yes, fair.
Well, I did have my hand up earlier.
Sorry.
A lot of people have referenced the community are telling us, the community are telling us, wow.
Well, we've commissioned the report, top of the list.
Ninety clients in the space of a year went to the C A B. How many times are they going to turn up each week, you see one?
How many, how many people does Tracy say? How many people rocks up now using us the de facto one stop shop? Off the record, under the radar.
No, I'm not against that, you keep saying, we hear this, we hear this, we hear this. It's right there in the report, ninety people over twelve months turned up to ask for advice. We've done a, I can't think what it's called, but there's a warm room open spacing, two hundred and thirty two people have responded, about eighty percent of it, yes. So arguably, the vast majority.
Still a good book of wicked house.
I know, arguably the vast, you know, I'm just saying, where is the data to show us, show me for me to look at, that says there is a permanent need for a forty hour a week person to sit in an office, and there will be a queue of people walking in, you're at nine o'clock, you're at nine thirty, you're at ten o'clock.
I think just.
Do we need that? If we need it, I'll stick my hand in the air right now.
Well, is it not, is it not taught in this, oh, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, just come to Keith here.
Well, I'm just thinking in terms of where we go, I mean, in the same sense, I only saw this sort of thing, so in the same sense of having time to digest. Given, I was like, the warm open house is funded and will happen, and there are fans and people in, kind of coming into place, and that's all moving forward. I would suggest that you welcome this report and commend it, and basically, say that we collectively will explore the implementation. It keeps it on the table, it keeps it moving forward, but as I say, I'm not sure, I can't have them half saying, would not recommend you as my financial advisor, I have one, to create a post and a spend regime now, before you've even looked at the budget situation, which you're going to do next week, would be, no, not.
It's a very sensible, you know, extremely sensible to look at everything, and we've got, as you said, it's evolving all the time, people coming forward saying, okay, well, we might get C A B now and Step Into Learning now as well. It could be in a week's time, but we've got even more people wanting to cover more days, you know, so it could be that that post we're talking about is is not needed, or, yeah, so it's very sensible to find out. And, yeah, exactly.
If it is needed, yeah.
Yeah, and I said.
We've just been told they don't want them here on one day, here on the next day, here on the third day, that's exactly what we're going to do.
Right. Come through me, sorry, 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 thank you.
It's just a conflict of information, yeah.
Yeah, and what was I going to say? Did you want to say something, please, I was trying to remember what I was saying.
Yeah, you can, yeah, I often get that feeling. I just wanted to respond through you, of course, to councillor Coles, a passionate oratory on how much we need this, and I don't doubt that for a minute, but if you were to ask the public, you need it, but do you want to pay for it? Through your council tax, a fifteen percent increase, or whatever it might come to, to put these positions in, you might get a slightly different answer, I think that's probably. But that's one point, the other very simple point was, in the news today, we're hearing that all of a sudden power cuts, gas and electricity might be possible in the evenings throughout the entire country throughout the winter, and I'd noticed that you'd said that it was ten till four for the warm rooms, just wonder if you might need to perhaps give some thought to the evenings.
Yeah, it's a really good point, I mean, yeah, we need to, we need to charge, sorry, Amanda.
No, it's okay, it's fine, I'm quite happy for you to respond to people, yeah, no, that's fine. I guess the only other point I was going to make as well is that I don't, I don't feel like this council has been, you know, I think we've just been very measured, we've taken a lot of staff on in the last year that have been needed. So I think if it came out that it was, we did need that position, I don't think anyone's, you know, not going to do that, I think that's, yeah. Anyway, Sean, and then I do need to get in on.
Okay, so because this is kind of, this whole discussion is like meshing two different projects, which massively overlap and interlink with each other, I just want to kind of go back to what Keith said, which was, we can move it forward by just proposing to implement recommendations in before, that's not like, and then it, and then it's literally, we can do that within our current, like, structure.
What was the word you used?
Well, the to implement.
It wasn't that.
Sorry, it's research and, I can't think what word. Because we do need to look at the budget first, like, this needs to happen.
I said that, and I said, and we would, I think it's progress.
Okay, well, then that word.
Because we need to actually work out exactly what it means.
Completely, yeah, because everything is evolving, but also we definitely need to look at the budget setting, and if we're going to think about a role if it's needed, and if it's not going to be provided by a charity or another provision, then that budget needs to be set first, so if progress is the right learning, kind of propose that we progress the additions, or whatever you said that was appropriate, so, sorry.
You propose that we receive, no, sorry, yeah, receive the report.
Seeing the commander report and progress.
That's it, I was trying to think, I'm sorry. My dream.
Yes.
It's progress, because it's like, they need to carry on working about exactly what they mean to bring it forward, so it doesn't fall off the agenda, but at the same point, not that we're going to go away and write up a job spec tomorrow or.
But that adds it to our list of things on the council.
The leadership list.
I'm so sorry, yeah, but it actually puts it back on the agenda for oversight, and we'll be looking at that, and it would be. So if that's the way of actually moving it forward and making sure that that work isn't lost, because that's an amazing amount of work, by the way, to Jackie and Ian and to Martin, that's all been brought together, and thank you to you guys, again, I know everyone's saying thank you, but it is like a huge amount of time and effort beyond the boundaries of that job role, Ian, so, yeah.
I propose that, without the other problem, thank you. I'll set that. So all those in favour? Some stuff I said. Thank you, that's, okay. Thank you. Okay, to receive the progress report on the Compass Point Stoughton project.
I think I set this round, or at least our version of this. Briefly, the virtual call capsule progress has been made, we have had some of the terms that they wanted taken out, which is useful, though I would still say we are taking on more risk than we necessarily anticipated initially, but this one, we are in charge of the project, we are commissioning. So we do expect the final drafts of all those agreements to come through, and we can sign those off with the steering group. The landlord is on board, and he gave permission for the site investigation at the moment, but actually, we are still awaiting the final sign up on the project, which Cornwall Council require for the leaseholder before they give us a licence, so we need to progress that. Site investigation was carried out in the fifteenth of September, there were holes put in, samples taken, it's taken some time to actually analyse, though, it'll be a couple more weeks. There was more sand in the soil than we necessarily hoped, and certainly on the first couple of holes, but the the remaining ones were a bit more nearer the mark than we was expecting, but ultimately, the structural engineer takes all of that away, analyses it, and that allows them to design the foundation required for the building, and it's a very important part, because until we do that, we can't tender it. But that is moving on now, but that's happening, and that day, as it were, went well, we've got some learning about it, about how the access will work, and how grass reacts to movement and things, so it was very useful and was an important step forward. The project manager's working on the tender documentation, including the above. We haven't currently or recently recosted the project, and I will say, this is a concern, it is a risk, and I and I will say this, I sat in a clerks meeting online this morning, talking about budgets and such like, and some of my colleague counterparts have been putting things out to tender and getting prices back to double what they're expensive. And people are shelving projects because of the current market situation. So it is a risk, and it's something we are going to look at very carefully, both in terms of what the costings are, and maybe alternative or extra sources of funding. We are still planning, as I said, I mean, the current plan is to start March next year, and that's when we really do need to start work to move it over next summer. Current situation.
Thank you, Keith. Any questions? Oh, sorry, Mr Jennings.
Is he still going to be there mid-March?
Hope so, yeah, that is, that is the hope, yeah. Good question, yes, okay. It was, a lot of the risk, I'm assuming, is basically, like, we're taking potential ownership of it falling down, and insurance about tiles falling onto people and stuff like that, is it, is it that sort of risk? And just knowing how much can we just put onto the builder?
A lot of it will be, a lot of it will be moved on to the builder.
Yeah, okay, that's good, that's all to that.
Yes, Katie.
Just wanted to attempt to answer Mr Jennings's question. At the very beginning of the process, we were concerned that the cliffs erode, it was eroding very quickly at the moment, which was putting the structure in danger, we had the Solid Engineers Report, which stated that there was, I think, between ten and twenty five years, I think those were the two figures, I might be wrong, but it was thereabouts before it was in danger of going off, and the trouble is with cliffs, is they're unpredictable. They might go two inches in twenty years, and they might go twenty foot in two minutes, that's the problem. But the Solid Engineers Report said that it was good for another ten years on that side, however, I'm more inclined to be on your way of thinking.
Yeah, well, I think as I said at the meetings before, you want to look out forward, looking, you see what, you see what it's really looking like then.
Okay, thank you, and so progress report on the Wheel Sports Facility project, delegate town clerk in consultation with the Wheel Sports Facility Forum to finalise the draft submitted for submission to Cornwall Council. So, progress report.
God, you're picking on Peter again. It's moving along quite nicely, apart from one area, which is, the land has still not been transferred to us from Cornwall Council. I spoke to our representative this week, he assures me he is chasing it up, but, and yet, that has not happened. Other than that, the cable companies, they're currently in consultation with our legal department to get the relevant permissions there, assign somebody that will, they're effectively going to run a camera up for a check at what out before we touch anything. If anyone needs doing, they can do it while we're on site, they will do the same again, but government have all four checked their cables individually, and charged us for the privilege. We're going to get one of them to do it and share the information. Hopefully, you've had time to read the silly impact assessment, which Ian kindly did, good job.
A bit earlier than this one.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, there's longer than this one.
It's good work, far as I'm concerned, the bit itself is not one hundred percent ready, and that is why we need you to give us permission to sign off and submit it, it's got to go on the thirty first of October, there will not be another meeting before then, unless we want to call everybody back here. That bit, we shall be more to read, anything red flag, even, you know, question at the time before we sign off on it. And that is effectively where we are, we are closer than we have ever been before, we just can't hold it down.
Fantastic, that's good news, isn't it, overall? Yes, okay, did you hear?
Well, I feel optimistic.
That's it, I was going to say, so I did chase it up, and it has, the progress on that land transfer has been just ridiculously slow. But basically, what's happened is, it's consistently been on somebody's desk in the legal team at Cornwall Council, that has just eventually got to the top and then been shoved sideways, and I was told by Chris Sims, our community co-ops, that it is now being put as a priority case, but even so, even though that the reports had all been signed off by the previous community co-ops, which was Zoe, and I was told, probably about a year ago, that it was just ready to run, it's never got onto a director sign off, and it's still got to go through the legal machinery, which as we know with Compass Point is painful, to say the least, before we can get a transfer. But what they told me was they were aiming for early next spring as a transfer date.
Really check, thank you, Peter, obviously, my proposal is that we give Keith and the Wheel Sports Facility Forum prior approval to sign off the document when it is completed. No pressure.
One second then.
Okay, all those in favour then?
Got to do it now.
Brilliant, thank you, Ian. Okay, to receive the outcome of the annual audit of the accounting return and the publication of the notice of conclusion of audit.
This is hopefully a formality, because this is the process, we had a clean audit, I'm pleased to say, and it's gone out to public, so the notices are out, so this is for the government to fully be aware of that, note it, and something, what have you got for this, James?
I propose that we note it, one second then. Okay, to approve the ceiling of lease on art performing task force with beautiful Kegger.
Similar to the one item previous, council resolved, I think this year ago, to enter into this lease arrangement. We won't blame Cornwall Council, I'm pleased to say. We won't blame Cornwall Council, I'm pleased to say. But a protracted arrangement, negotiation, based on, we had the heads of terms, but I, I won't really say terms, or maybe the understanding of how leases work and such, you know, dragged on to a sin event at the time, and we got to stage, I think, that people know, it's only today that I finally had a phone call to say, well, are we agreed, is this something I can put before council? Because I really did not want to say defer this and open up even more issues. There are small operational issues around that site, but they are not in relation to the land of the lease or the building that they wish to put on it. So, we can deal with those outside of lease arrangements. And this is the lease which we landed up after months of legal kicking.
Yes. So, I'm guessing for, like, someone from the public, what they're considering is a replacement of a ship container for something a little bit more formalised and wooden?
Yes, in time, yes, so I mean, the council needs to get the funding and such. They do have a funding meeting with the Pro K Association, I think, next week. But, yes, but this enables, this is the council, the fact that they have a lease of the land actually enables them to get, go for other funding streams. But again, I mean, time scales are not guaranteed, but yes, that's their ambition.
Okay, so if there are no other questions? Sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't say.
Can we mute the counter, not happy? I had a quick look through the lease this afternoon, and one of my concerns with this whole thing with the Pro K Club was that originally they were in the sports building. I, this, I understand from them that a long time ago, they were, they were there, but then the birth change moved in. And they've sort of seemed to have been shot today. And they're now going to be putting another building on the downs, which to me is a bit more the downs gone, from what I understand. I understand it's only meant to be a temporary building.
Well, all I can say is the council have resolved these things. So, you're not necessarily...
In the right picture.
Well, you, I think you're understanding of the intention, but the intention of this is to allow the lease of that land, which has already been resolved to allow, so it's approving the lease document. And again, in so many terms, the council's already resolved to allow the club to divest the temporary wooden building, subject to its getting the funding and such like. And this puts, enacts that.
No, just the chunk of the downs disappearing.
Okay, so, I just wanna propose that we approve the sealing of the lease, basically. Second one, okay. All those in favour? Okay, all those against, and all those abstaining. Thank you. Okay. Onto filling vacancies on the committees, positions on outside bodies and lead councillor roles. So, first of all, we've got a vacancy on the planning committee. If anybody would like to do that one. It's on Wednesday, isn't it? Okay. Two vacancies.
I was just thinking, the new councillor that could fill these roles isn't actually here. Did anybody contact her at last?
I did send an email to say that you can, to all, I've, no, no, no. I've sent it to all councillors, if you don't have to be present, you can ask for any of those with these positions.
The oversight committee has got two vacancies currently. We've got one on the staffing committee as well, in Simon's absence, as you know.
Well, effectively, if you, if you're as the new deputy mayor, automatically has a place, but you're already on the committee. So, it doesn't actually, so we, so we still have, if the deputy mayor had been someone who wasn't on the committee, then there would have been a vacancy, but we do have a vacancy.
So, we do have a vacancy, if anybody would like to draw on the staffing committee.
When does that make?
Random.
Yes, it hasn't been set, it has gone some dates.
Whenever I remember.
I'm thinking, sorry, Thursday, thinking about it. Is the 30th of November a Thursday? I think that's probably a Thursday, but we normally do those in the daytime.
Random as well. It's a daytime, it's always a daytime, it's quite flexible, it isn't a set time, is it? We usually put the thing out to find out when everybody can make it, so.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
If, if no one else is interested, then I'm happy to sit on that.
Cool, thank you, Kevin. Do you need to do the second one? I can remember those processes. Yes, okay, so all those in favour? That's everybody, thank you. A B S T C rep on the town team. At the moment, it's me. It was me, Simon, so yes.
I will say that Paul Tilsey has indicated his willingness to take that on the board.
I said that.
Um, I was gonna, so before, like, I wasn't putting myself forward on any of the town team stuff, because I felt like having a business in the town was a thing, but then there's other people that are on that team that have businesses, so actually, I wouldn't mind putting myself forward on that.
Okay.
Although my business does not have anything to do with having customers come in, so it doesn't have anything to do with High Street, so.
So, okay, it's me. And I suppose the fact that I'm gonna have to step down doesn't mean anything really, unless I literally left the town team in my absence. You would then need a second person. I'm just thinking, from a practical point of view, I'm gonna be out of action soon, if.
If you wish to step down, we had two vacancies.
I don't wanna step down yet. When I need to, that, that would possibly be the best way.
Having someone step in for a bit until you step down.
And Paul Tilsey's expression, was it he would like to be on there, or if nobody else wants to, after that, just checking more things? Or did he not say it, just so that I know?
I think he just, I think just, well, obviously, Paul has been involved through B C C Ts, and I think the reality is B C Ts, B C Ts will probably not be around in the long term. So, I think Paul was just feeling that this would be a way of him using his prior knowledge and input still.
Yeah, okay. So, how would you feel about that, Katie? If Paul was to go on there and I stepped down when the time was needed, or do you?
Yeah, I guess my, my only thing from that is I've actively applied for some good growth stuff. So, I've got some fair, we have some big national partners, so, and they're the ones that are writing those bits for that as well. So, in terms of like things that, like useful experience in, of the funds that they're going for, plus consultancy stuff, which obviously I have a fair bit of experience in running workshops and stuff. Like, I feel like I have understanding of who would be useful for that kind of thing, and the sort of skills that they need to bring, and how that process might work.
So, in this situation where we haven't got Paul present, do you go to a vote for filling a space like this? I don't know what procedure.
Yeah, I would say that it's the same as any other, that we, you have a choice at this stage. Given, probably you'll have a choice at another stage as well.
Yes, yes, yes. Yes, okay.
I have lots of seats if people want to go to a written vote.
I don't mind, I wanna do it. Yeah, I don't mind, you're welcome. Yes, okay, yeah, that might be nice, and then we can do it at the same time then, can't we? If people can write either Katie or Paul on a slip. And then we just straightforward, two of us in the hands, that's all I can do.
Bit of paper on that. Can I use one vote?
Yes, that's flexible. Thanks for the risk assessment somewhat lower. But it might be worth getting some feedback before, you know, before something's said.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I've got a few candidates, but. I was, I was considering, you know, you have a meeting, great candidates.
Yeah.
Has everyone got a vote? Good cheers.
So, can you just write, thank you, Paul, for letting us know, chances of explaining.
Even as a political person, like you would in my life, I still do.
It's hard, quite, yeah. Not too small, but I'm rattled.
Is it number?
Down in the winter, right?
I've known it, it's.
Right.
Okay, so the number as well? Okay, thank you very much for doing that. The end result was, the end result was Katie. So, because everyone voted, that's it, so we don't need to do another vote.
That would have been all right.
So, yeah, so we're good, done. Okay, wonderful, thank you, that's very good.
And there are a few lead councillor roles.
Yes.
Yes, I will remind you.
Well, yes, that too, but also, I was gonna suggest that the economic development I'd be interested in, but I wouldn't be able to do the crime and community safety at the same time, I don't feel, given that equal.
So, we've got community groups, housing, and economic development.
Yeah, yeah, economic development.
Remember, obviously, these are roles, this can be fluid, because, I don't know, it's what councillors decided originally. If it's not a role, it can be recast or new roles can be created, but it's currently.
Okay, I'll go down to him in order then. So, community groups, we have a vacancy on, so anybody that would like to be a lead councillor and feels that they are good to be in touch with groups and involved in that process. Yeah, Jackie, if you'd like to. All those, yeah.
Busy Jackie, Nicole, yeah.
Housing, so there is a vacancy on housing.
I do have interest in housing.
Wonderful, okay. My second visit, all those in favour?
I like living in a house.
Thank you, okay, so thank you, thank you. And economic development, so Katie's expressed an interest in. All those in favour? But, so that leaves now an opening on crime and community safety. Crime and community safety, okay. So, we have an opening on crime and community safety.
Yeah.
Don't you go on the safety, I might know better about the crime.
Would I actually, at this point, potentially suggest this new role of, when we talked through the other night about the home development, that actually we felt like, and also there was a, a letter that came through about the need to really support our older community, but actually formalising that in a role of, I don't know how you would phrase it, like, for, basically for elderly and for the older community. And it can be, I think we mentioned before, it could be, I mean, it's been naturally done already on the, I mean, there's a bit of the accessibility side and social welfare side, things like that, but it's, and health as well. So, yeah, if we put that into, into the title, or if it's its own separate thing, if it's just the same person anyway, but it'd be good to have it, so. But I don't know how you want it.
I suggest, you've got two kind of decisions here, one, and I would wrap them together, is do you want to add it to the existing role, or is it a, a lead council for the older community, I'm not crazy, pretty far. Exactly, but if it's any worth creating, someone's gonna fit it.
Yes, so we've got at the moment an opening still on crime and community safety. We're looking at perhaps adding the older community as a part of the lead council role. So, potentially, the older community, community safety, including the older community is like one thing. Yes.
When Tom and I took on the lead, it was stated adult, adult social care, would that not cover the adult provision?
Yeah.
Is that elderly?
Health, so that the, in the health.
So, elderly and social care.
Elderly and should be health, social care, isn't it?
But social care, dare I say, social care is a little bit limited in, obviously, that's only one section of the community.
Specifically not to name the elderly community.
I thought it said older people in it, but I can't.
I remember that, no.
Well, it just needs to be reinstated if people, if everyone, that's the word we're using.
I mean, if someone else wants to do it, it's fine, but you can't just put it on one.
So, I've proposed that we add the elderly community to health provision. I don't know how best terminology, I guess, would be written.
Someone give me a DC term.
Isn't it aged community? Aged community, that's aged, isn't it?
People of 40 years.
Senior champion.
The title, other people don't find that, whatever word we choose, I imagine someone, but typically like it for a particular reason, but. Right, well, we, we know it's, we know which community we are talking about.
Yes, so, we've had a proposal on the second to add it to the health provision, also just need to vote in favour of that for a second. All those in favour?
It's aged and community.
No, just the community, is that?
Exactly, yeah.
So we just have to go, anybody for crime and community safety?
If, if there is no one else interested, I will step up for crime and community, but you need to fill me in as to what is out of that role in town.
Yeah, brilliant, that's great, I'll second your proposal. And so all those. Brilliant, thank you. Excellent, is that everything? Wonderful, okay, so on to the financial report, uh, scheduled payments will be made between the first of October and the sixth of October.
Propose made? Oh, sorry, propose made.
Noted, yeah, I'll second that, and so all those in favour? And all those against, and abstain. And the scheduled payments to be made on the seventh of October.
Propose made?
I'll second that, okay, all those in favour? And against, abstain. Okay. We.
Oh, before you close the meeting.
I'm going to, don't bother me, I'm just closing, I'm not going to close it.
Before we go into private session?
We're not.
Oh, we're not going to do it?
No.
At this, I've, I've got an explanation for Mr Jennings, which I'd like to make in front of the council to his question. But you tell me when the time is right.
Yeah, do it now if you like, and then I'll do the last bit.
Right, okay, so the, the question about hedge removal, it, it came to my mind, I was thinking about it after you said it, I had a very similar situation at, at Linstam, as somebody who owns the, the field, they created, effectively knocked out some of the hedge and created a roadway onto the road, and the response that I got from local council, because it was an unclassified roadway, and the landowner had every right to do that, and there's nothing in law to stop them doing so, and I've just looked at the classification of Agnes Close, which is exactly the same, it's an unclassified road, so the landowner is perfectly entitled to do that.
I don't believe in Agnes Close.
No. Wait, hang on a second. I'll, I'll double check, is it, sorry. I was looking at. Yeah, yeah, sorry, exactly the same, I was looking through, yeah, exactly the same situation.
So they can just leave the open edge for another day then?
Yeah.
Now, I think I'd better go and cut the order plates out of the sort of.
He's going to vote.
Well, they've been in those trenches.
Well, they've thrown it up the edge, haven't they? And that's it. No, they, they, to the, to the, where the edge is. That's it. Nobody's, it'll be three months, they'll only get some of the kendra, come and look at it.
Right, if it's all right, I'm just going to move on to the last item, just so that we don't have to vote to extend the meeting. Okay, um, I would pass it to Keith, because, um, we thought we were going to close session, but we are not, so.
Well, my advice at the moment is that I put this on the agenda under closed session, because I thought, subject to a meeting I was going to have, that there may be an issue of dispute, and therefore if we were going to talk about legalities and that, then it would be something actually that would need to be held in closed session. I had a meeting yesterday, and it was more productive than I, um, anticipated, but I'm very pleased to say, and therefore I, I put out a brief paper today, which is, um, the solution, um, so therefore I'm, I'm suggesting, unless councillors wish to, and again, we can move at any point, any item can be moved into by resolution into closed session, if the conversation is going to go that way, but at the moment, I would suggest, I don't think you need to go to closed session, um, I'll leave it to you, hang on to take that.
No, no objections.
Right, so if I go into the actual items, just a very brief, I mean, we had the car chargers put in outside the front of the building as part of the co-cars provision, and co-cars were actually provided through a local council seal, uh, funding, and by a social, CI, CI, what did they word it, to a church company, um, so it's not, it's a not-for-profit, um, kind of business, um, and so with the seal funded, and clearly having the co-cars was very much part of the council's environmental policy of getting people into sustainable transport and supported by the council, and the provision of the spaces was in effect the council's contribution to that, to that project. To be honest, though, as I say, the, the chargers were a by-product, because obviously you need chargers for the co-cars. The chargers have been a problem, as it were, since they went in, we ended up with four chargers, two for the co-car, or two, no, unit double pod, which does two, with the co-cars, and two spaces for private, for the provision charges. The public ones in particular have not worked properly, and that is a problem to us, it's one to the staff, because actually most, we don't actually provide that, so it's not a, our own provision, we just give the space and the company provides those things, um, we get the promise of people not being aware, saying what's wrong here, and they're charged or whatever, so clearly, for the provision of the co-cars going forward and there, so security and to have a decent service on the other, uh, like, spaces, we needed to come to a solution. The company told me to provide it, and we've entered into a licence with them, now, again, that was agreed, but the licence provided a number of things as to. What was, potentially was that, potentially we might have been asked to pay a real sum of money towards, um, the re-provision of the wiring system, supplies the chargers. At the meeting yesterday, and in a nutshell, the company that provides these chargers said they will pay full costs of a new mains supply to the site, to solely, um, work for the chargers, so in effect, it takes us out of the back equation, I think it's on our land, so we need to be able to give them a, a sense of the provision to do that, but they will pay a substantial charge to Western Power to upgrade the power supply, and they will upgrade the chargers to actually be better chargers, and we may also within that look at re-siting them to something which makes slightly better sense, um, in their location. So my recommendation is, no, I don't believe on that basis, I would recommend that to the council as a good solution, it keeps the co-cars operational and here, it provides a better end, not be working, but actually have improved, um, service to the public via the third party, and, uh, so it doesn't give any financial, um, charge on the council. So that's where we're at at the moment.
Any questions?
Um, so the thing that obviously stands out in terms of the, um, bucket percent is the fifteen-year contract, which is in car terms and technology terms insanely long time, um, and technology can be one of a lot, so much so that we don't even know if we need chargers in ten years, nor anything else, um, so I don't, I, I'm trying to understand, like, it is, this is literally what they've come forward to us with, right?
Yeah, this is the proposal.
Um, and so it'd be good to basically see what, what is maneuverable here to a certain extent, because my understanding of car charging is that it's actually getting to be like a very, it's the next, at the end of the day, it's the next petrol station, and how many petrol stations that we are, do have around the country, and the end destination points, the most desirable points to have a car charger, because when you're normally going somewhere in a petrol car, you stop off at the charging, like, you know, petrol station, you fill it up, and you go on, and you go to your journey, the whole point of car charging is that you charge when you get to the end of your journey, and end destination points such as here, which is next to the beach, is going to be insanely popular, um, especially for holidaygoers who are, who stay in a holiday park, who haven't necessarily got car charging points, so we do need that facility here, but there is also, I, I feel like there is definitely, like, an opportunity here that we're missing out on, like, as providing potentially a service ourselves, where we could be actually taking some of those profits and putting that back into the pointy, or offering it at a discounted rate, or something along those lines, and it's obviously, like, it's obviously a big investment, a big questionnaire, and I'd be quite worried about going into such a large contract, where I don't even know, for example, is that excluding any other options, is it like, they're the lone people that are allowed to go onto this land, and things like that, so.
I think, look, the issue is, is that we are already in twelve-year real wisdom.
Yeah.
So, and, well, we're probably eleven years left, so in one sense, um, we can't, and we can't undo that straightforwardly, uh, there may be, like, anything, there's always ways of doing that, but not necessarily without cost in undoing that, um, but at one point, so in one sense, this is looking for a solution to the current problem, you're quite right, certainly fifteen years is a long time, um, it is at their risk, in the sense of, if no one wants a car charger in ten years because we're all on hydrogen or something, that's, no, the council hasn't put any capital into this provision, um, but in their terms, and this has come down to the, you know, the, um, financial modelling, that's in their financial model, is the length of time they need the contract for to show to their financiers.
Well, to make it profitable, that makes sense.
That they can actually get the return, so it doesn't work for them in terms of putting this solution forward unless they get the fifteen-year return.
Is it exclusive?
Um.
And is it only for the amount of charges that they can't add anymore?
The spaces will be, once licensed, will be exclusive to them, because clearly they're the provider, they're going to stick their charger right there, they need the spaces, so in that sense, yes, um. And so you would.
So it's basically, is there exclusivity on the whole land, or is it literally just those charging days, um, so basically, so that we have the opportunity to, like, explore further ventures, basically, like, if technology comes on the lot, you can literally sit a solar setup and it'll charge a car or whatever, you know, wouldn't be able to do that. Um, so, yeah, working out the exclusivity of that and the licensing around that, and there's also things like, is there anything about the size of the signs they require, and all that sort of jazz as well, do their signs have to be bigger than other signs that we might put up in the future, or that sort of, it's complicated, it's big, but I basically think more than this, effectively, to go into fifteen years with one thing.
Yes, Peter?
I understand what councillor Good is saying, but I think it's sort of shutting the stable door after the horse has already gone to the brake, um, the only thing that I did want to say was, I don't think that we're bound to give the parking spaces for free, we can still charge if they're within our car park, and I think that might, in, in, in my memory, from some of the early dis- early discussions that we had with that company, that was up for grabs, but we didn't choose to do it on the spaces that were in front of the park.
We never, we never have charged at the front, we don't have the capacity, actually, I have looked, because I know Corham Capital's charging point over in the presence, you also do have to pay for parking, and, and, and I believe that the golf course, that's also a face, so that is probably a fairly problem, so again, I can take those issues back to, um, because at the moment, actually, the, the agreement is for those spaces out the front, now, both for ourselves, actually, operationally, there is perhaps some merit of moving around the back, and actually, I think they were quite interested in moving them around the back, so it could be beneficial to all of us, um, and.
With the user as well.
Yes, exactly, the whole accessibility and visibility of them, and they are committed to improve, I think today, they're, they're, I think they've got some new people, and, and, and I think part of what we would want is a much better kind of implementation and, and, signage and marking, but they're saying the right things, we just need to hold them to it, make sure they deliver it as part of these installments, um, but, um, yeah, as I say, we, we are in that agreement, we can look at, um, exclusivity.
Oh, it was a signage, like, that, is, is there, if we have, if we put in our own signs for a different firm, do their signs have to be bigger or smaller, that sort of thing? So, yeah.
I don't believe the, the part of the signage generally, I don't think the detail is that. But our own signage should be specified, and they, I don't think they've, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure they haven't specified that we can't have our own signage for other things. Let's see that.
Yes, speaking.
I'm reading through it, it mentions about transformers in there, they look quite large, aren't they? And there's the sizes of, in this area, um, which, that's just something I've been, been said about, tastefully blending them in.
That's one of the.
Stone flat.
Could, can I clarify the, so, um, if you look at the SO station, the individual charging standards are trying to make as small as possible, and it's like all the mains in a giant box.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're correct, basically.
Yeah, they'll, they'll have to be a giant box.
There will be, uh, I mean, for the single high charger, I don't expect it to be massive from generally what I've seen around, I haven't got my electric car yet, but, yeah, like, there will be something, because, because they, they want to keep their chargers small.
Yeah.
That's what the user wants to see, small little chargers that are delicate and light on the surface, so I guess we do have to think about, I guess it's letting that land out as well, there'll be extra land that they want, um, and then, as you say, visuals of that. And also, are we allowed to do it as a part of permission, of adding another big box somewhere very close to this hill, and that sort of jazz. In a conservation area.
Clearly, there's climate implications, they would need to get that provision, I'm pretty sure it hasn't been on the actual, the actual design.
Any other questions?
No, there's a little bit more, there's also the flooding risk, obviously, and whether or not they would have to, because obviously, we are very high flood risk, and whether or not that transformer would mean it would have to be higher, as in, like, Tasty Hill there, or something like that.
When it was initially talked about for upfront.
Assuming they must have done anything like, they must have, but again, it's a fifteen-year thing, and our fifteen-year climate projections, and you're sitting in a nice hefty super mains voltage into the water surrounding, zap, 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 where it's not trying to walk through or something.
Well, I, I, again, that hasn't, that hasn't been specifically addressed, um, other than, they've got quotes from Western Power to put in a supply of that size, and, but it's, one, I don't want to use the word assume, but one should be able to rely on Western Power in meeting regulations, as to what their install is, but.
As far as all this other stuff goes, the questions that have been raised, and so how are we on a time schedule for them wanting a reply from us, is it in there, and we've got time to go back to them with queries first?
Some of this, some of this might be an existing contract, basically.
Yeah.
Which would just be.
I think what they, given that this has dragged on for a long time, in terms of, as I say, we've not had an effective, um, provision of the public chargers from day one, um, I think they need a, it's an immediate principle decision of, if you go on, so I think there are subject to, we're obviously subject to planning, subject to the agreement, the, the size of the transformer, we, we're not committed to moving it around the back, it's a, it's a suggestion which actually, on one level, to focus us operationally, and they sounded quite keen on as well, but.
Yeah.
If, if the answer is, it doesn't work, other than being out the front, we can go back, because that's their existing license, something else is, is a negotiation from there, um, to be saying, well, their right is to those spaces out the front, but if we choose to say, yes, it works better out the back, we can.
Yes.
We should agree that.
I feel that we're adding a couple of years on to something. I feel that we're adding a couple of years on to something, and it means we get to keep the co-cars, you know, we've already got them established in the contract for twelve years as it is, that's just my personal thought, so, um, subject to queries that have been raised, Keith's made a, a list of, um, proposed that we, in principle, yes, yeah, in principle, agree to the proposal, the request. Yeah. A second. Okay, all those in favour?
Just in time.
Meeting first, yes, thank you, thank you.